Good evening. We'll call our meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, October 18th, 2023. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately this evening, Ms. Allen could not be with us. So we do need to make a motion that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education appoint Nancy Tagliafara as Acting Board Secretary for the public portion of tonight's meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and then we also need to make a motion, we could do it now, for someone to take our minutes in our closed session.
I think Ms. Belko.
A motion for Ms. Belko to be our secretary in closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm so bad at it.
Ms. Tagliafara, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alvarez?
Present.
Ms. Belko?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePaine?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Kirby?
Here.
Mr. Tofano?
Here.
Madam President, you have a call.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October 13th, 2023, at all schools, on the district website, in the Home News Tribune, in the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4:21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, or bullying; matters protected by attorney-client privilege; confidential personnel matter; and the board vacancy.
Motion.
Following closed session, any action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we'll be in closed session till approximately 7:15. Thank you. Okay, we're back in our public session. Good evening. The next item on our agenda is our approval of minutes. We have the Public Board of Education meeting August 16th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Second, are there any questions or comments?
I have to recuse on the September 20th.
This is the public meeting August 16th. That's okay.
No, you just mentioned the first one, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Ms. Ratner abstains. Can I get a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes of August 16th, 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Second, are there any questions? Comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Right, Ms. Ratner abstains, so noted. Okay, those are approved. Can I get a motion to approve the Public Board of Education meeting minutes for September 20th, 2023?
Motion.
I have a question.
So do I.
Second?
We didn't have a meeting September 20th. Why do we have minutes?
Well, something happened.
And also the statements missing from the minutes.
There shouldn't be no minutes. We had no meeting. We had no quorum. We had no meeting. Nothing was decided. It should be noted there was no meeting, no minutes.
I'm asking why we have minutes for the September 20th meeting since there was technically no meeting. We waited around thinking our colleagues might show a little bit late, but they didn't, so we didn't have a meeting. We had discussion, but it wasn't a meeting. So why do we have minutes?
Mr. Gagliardi?
So I don't have what was prepared, but I don't think there's anything wrong with memorializing what did and didn't happen. So very often, in fact typically, boards of education have minutes of committee meetings, and technically that's what it was because you had a group of board members here discussing board business, but not a quorum. So I'm not concerned about the fact that there are minutes. I can't comment on whether what you have is appropriate because I don't have a copy of it. But, oh, thank you. What is presented here seems appropriate to me, even though technically it wasn't a board meeting. I do think it should be memorialized.
Motion.
So I'm fine with this.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Abstain. I would like to change my vote from no to abstain. Sorry, I told you I'd go easy.
Okay. So we have two, one, two, three, four. Ms. Kirby, you vote yes?
Yes.
So you have four yeses, two abstain, and three no.
No.
Okay, so you have four yeses, three no's, and two abstains. Okay. Equals nine.
That counts.
So the minutes are approved. Okay. The next item on our agenda is our board vacancy. So I want to start by giving a little background. I don't know if it's something with the equipment. No, they're all the same. Is that better?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. The Board of Education approved the resignation of Karen Bearman at the August 2023 Public Board of Education meeting. That evening, the board instructed the board secretary to put together a public notice to be sent out advertising the vacancy for the board seat and announce that applicants that the board wished to interview would be done so at the September 20th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. I would like to ask Mr. Gagliardi to give a recap of the events that took place since then.
Globally or just related to the board vacancy? Okay. So as I believe I mentioned when the vacancy was created, by statute, the Board of Education had 65 days to fill the vacancy, and the board put in motion the process described by the board president. That process did not end with the board selecting a new board member within the 65 days. And so as a matter of law, the board's jurisdiction to solve that problem itself ends, and the matter then falls into the hands of the county superintendent. The county superintendent was advised that the board was not selecting a candidate within those 65 days, and therefore the matter was his to resolve. If you were to look at the statute, and I'm confident that some people have, you would see that the county superintendent's role is established by statute, but the means by which he satisfies that responsibility are not set forth in statute. The county superintendent has absolute discretion into how that vacancy is filled. In this particular case, the county superintendent communicated with the board president, and then subsequently with me, saying that in so many words, "I don't know these citizens in Monroe Township, and the Board of Education is in a position to take this thing back, figure it out, majority rules." Meaning that of the nine individuals here, five of the nine, if they agree on a candidate, will be filling the vacancy as directed by the county superintendent. I know that there was a discussion at the previous board meeting about whether the James River representative had the authority to vote as a matter of law under the statute and a difference of opinion in that regard. That difference of opinion has not been resolved, meaning that if there were another vacancy a month from now, we would have the same problem. Under these circumstances, however, we have no problem whatsoever because the county superintendent, who was aware of that dispute, said in so many words, "I don't care about that now. I'm not resolving that issue as a matter of law. Majority rules. Figure it out." And so with that, the Board of Education has had an opportunity to benefit from the direction set by the county superintendent, and it is up to the Board of Education to fill that vacancy as directed by the county superintendent with a majority deciding, if they can, majority agreeing on a candidate. Unless the board has any questions, I yield the floor back to the president.
Thank you. And this evening, we were in closed session from 6:30 to approximately 7:15. We had a very long discussion as a board moving forward of what action we wanted to take, and we've decided that we've had ample time to review all of the applications, all of the information that was provided by those that sent in an application. Therefore, we will not be conducting any interviews this evening. At this point, I will open up the floor for nominations for our open vacancy seat. Mr. Tofano?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Matt Gorham.
I'll second that.
Okay, are there any questions? All right, Ms. Tagliafara, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alvarez?
No.
Ms. Fabiano?
No.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Abstain.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So our board vacancy will be filled by that vote to Mr. Matt Gorham. I believe he is here in the audience. Good evening. If you would like to come and join us at the table, pending a background check, we will need to have that done by our business office. And as soon as that is complete, Mr. Gorham will be sworn in at a public board of education meeting. But this evening, Mr. Gagliardi has advised that he can join us at the table. He cannot vote on anything.
Cannot participate in executive session. Can't have access to confidential materials. So for those of you who've been here for a while, this is a relatively new requirement of the law that even board members have to go through a background check before they can be sworn. So I think two things will happen within the next 24 hours. Number one, the background process will begin. And number two, the board office should advise the county superintendent in writing about what transpired, consistent with his statutory directive, so he understands that the board has made a decision as he directed.
Okay.
But again, in my experience, they very often do what the board president has suggested, which is invite the chosen candidate to come up, sit with the board, comment as he or she sees fit, but they're not able to participate in a vote, in executive session, or in any access to confidential information.
Thank you. Give a round of applause to Mr. Gorham. Thank you, Mr. Gorham. And if you would like to introduce yourself to the board and to the community?
Do you have a microphone?
You can use that microphone there.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is actually Matthew Gorham. I just recently retired from the Monroe Township School System after teaching for 38 years. So very proud to be a member of Monroe Township, very proud to be a member of the teaching staff for the length of time. We have some fabulous teachers. We also have some fabulous students, some fabulous parents. So we're really looking forward, I'm really looking forward, to working on the board. The board is a group of people who are really doing their best to ensure the best for the students of Monroe Township. So it's important that we work together. It's important that we listen. It's important that at the end of the day, we do our best for not only the students, but also the parents, taxpayers, and the administration. So I've been involved as an educator. I've been involved as a parent, and I'm still involved as a taxpayer. So I understand a lot of the issues, and I'm going to hopefully be able to learn a lot from my colleagues and be a real hard-working member of this team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members Report. We have both of our student board members here this evening. We can start with Ms. Hetby Dacker. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Sahaj Taha.
Oh, Sahaj, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll start with you.
So I'm the Junior Student Board of Ed Representative, and I'll start with Mill Lake Elementary School. So the Mill Lakers team had a fabulous start to their 2023 and 2024 school year. On September 19th, the Lakers team hosted a winning back-to-school event that had fans cheering, parents smiling, and teachers studying their stuff. October has brought many exciting events, including the Mill Lake Week of Respect that was from October 2nd through October 6th. Events included Jersey Day, Pyjama Day, and Mismatch Day to express individuality. Mid-month, the Lakers are hosting their Fall Conference events, where parents meet with the teachers, participate in school activities, and explore school programming and opportunities. Later in October, Mill Lake's PALS program will begin, which pairs up students to foster friendships, socialization skills, and academic collaboration. On October 24th, the Mill Lake students will participate in their Fall Unified Festival. On October 26th, the students will pair up district athletes with the second-grade students. A big shout-out to Mrs. McLeod and Mr. Berendika for facilitating this collaboration. Halloween is one of Mill Lake's favorite times of the year. The Lakers will be hosting their annual Halloween Parade, classroom tailgating parties, and school events that are sure to be the talk of the town. November will also bring lots of fun events, including fire safety assemblies, National Education Week activities, and much, much more. To end, Mill Lake's new motto is "One Team, One Dream."
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Hetby, and I'm the Senior Board of Education rep. And moving on to the next school, Woodland. So Woodland School celebrated Respect Week, October 2nd through October 6th, with Spirit Days in conjunction with the school-wide theme, Legos of Limitations and Build Together. Students were also selected for Grades 4 and 5 Student Council. Students who were interested in becoming student representatives were needed to complete an application and write a brief essay explaining why they should be a member of Student Council. Woodland's Title I Ready to Rise program is an additional support opportunity in ELA and mathematics for students who are eligible by the established criteria. It will begin at the end of November. A parent information session is scheduled for 10:18 during evening conferences at 6:00 p.m. Woodland's classrooms continue to tie in fun events with curriculum. For example, Mrs. Rutherford and Mrs. Levitt's Grade 4 class explored the effects of weathering with fun sugar shake activity, and Mrs. Herman's class finished up their first social studies unit on geography. The students made their own flat Stanley to mail away to their families and friends, and will receive letters and pictures reporting on where he has traveled. Woodland was excited to have their first school-wide Assembly of the Year, Grand Faloon's Ways of Waters. The Middlesex County Township Clean Communities Grant has approved up to 18 free earth science assemblies, and Woodland was fortunate enough to receive one of them.
Moving on to Barclaybrook Elementary School. It has been a busy month at Barclaybrook. During the week of October 2nd to the 6th, Barclaybrook School celebrated their Week of Respect to promote kindness and inclusivity and to celebrate uniqueness and diversity. It was a wonderful event to see so many students participate in school spirit days that week. Barclaybrook began its Great Kid program, where students are recognized for demonstrating growth mindset, respect, empathy, acceptance, and trust. They selected their first winners this month, and they wrote their names on the Great Kid Wall of Fame, and winners received a book from their book vending machine. Barclaybrook School will host parent-teacher conferences this week, and they look forward to welcoming parents and guardians into their building to have great conversations about their students. The Barclaybrook Brookside PTA hosted the Scholastic Book Fair last week, and students were very, very excited to purchase books during this great fundraiser. Barclaybrook welcomed author David Biedzerki to their school on Monday. Thank you to the Barclaybrook Brookside PTA for sponsoring this amazing event, where the students were able to meet this acclaimed author and illustrator and learn about what he does to make his ideas come to life. Students even got to see a sneak peek of the author's current work in progress that is set to be published next year.
All right, and now moving on to Oak Tree. So October 2nd through 6th was also Week of Respect at Oak Tree, and each day of the week was a special theme, aligning with the theme "Respect Rocks." So themed days included Respect Rocks, Dress Like a Rockstar Day, Everyone Counts Day, in which students wore a shirt with any number on it, Hats Off to Respect Day, where all students wore hats, and then Put Name Calling to Bed Day, where students were able to wear pajamas. October 18th and 19th were parent-teacher conferences for Oak Tree. October 24th was the Schoolwide Picture Day. And Oak Tree students will participate in the District Unified Fall Festival as well. And on October 26th, all second-grade classes will participate in the Second and Seven Reading Program. High school athletes will read to classes and give each student a signed copy of the book that was read. October 27th is the PTA Trunk or Treat, and Oak Tree teachers are hosting an allergy-free trunk-or-treat this year. October 31st is Oak Tree's annual Halloween parade that they're very, very much looking forward to.
All right, next up is Applegarth Elementary School. In early October, Applegarth had their Week of Respect as well. In addition to themed attire, students watched videos about cyberbullying and how to prevent it, made kindness catchers, participated in love and kindness meditations, watched a video by the school counselor, Mrs. Shan Holzer, on the difference between conflict and bullying. Each class made a mission statement about how they would show respect in their classes and hung them outside of their classrooms. Applegarth's coding class series started on October 11th. Numerous students from MTHS came to Applegarth to teach basic JavaScript to the 4th and 5th grade students. Some of Applegarth's classes participated in writing letters to veterans at the invitation of Mrs. Daniel Drust, Supervisor of Social Studies and Science. Applegarth's annual Fall Bus Drills are scheduled for Thursday, October 26th. Also, the PTA-sponsored Fall Book Fair is being held on October 25th and 26th. In addition, the PTA-sponsored Trunk or Treat will be held on Friday, October 27th. The PTA is also sponsoring the Fall Festival that will be taking place on weekends starting October 29th at the Red Wagon Farm. Student council elections are happening this week. Student council elections are happening this week. Congratulations to all of the future leaders who wrote speeches and made campaign posters, and to the newly-elected class representatives of Applegarth Elementary. With the exciting holiday coming up, Halloween parties will be held in classes on Tuesday, October 31st, organized by the wonderful Room Parents. Lastly, parent-teacher conferences begin today, with evening conferences tomorrow night, October 18th.
Okay, moving on to Brookside. So Brookside School celebrated their Week of Respect again from October 2nd through 6th with themed days such as Together We Stand Up to Bullying, Wear School Colors, Stand Up for Others, Be a Superhero, where students wore superhero shirts, just to name a few. And Brookside also had a Fire Prevention Week. To recognize this week, the 3rd grade students visited the Fire Safety House, and 4th and 5th grade students had a Fire Safety Assembly on Wednesday, October 11th. Parent-teacher conferences for Brookside are also being held on October 18th and 19th, and evening conferences are on the 19th. And they are celebrating Unity Day by wearing orange to show support of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion today.
All right, moving on to Monroe Township Middle School. The week of October 23rd, after-school club information will be going out to all parents. October 26th, the 6th grade play will take place at 7:00 p.m. And October 27th, the 6th grade Halloween dance will take place, which I know personally, my younger sister is very excited to attend.
All right, and finally, our very own Monroe Township High School. So on Thursday, October 19th, the high school will be hosting a presentation by Wellspring Center for Prevention that is entitled "Current Drug Trends: What All Parents Need to Know," and it is going to be hosted in the Performing Arts Center. And then congratulations to the girls and boys soccer teams, who are Red Division Champions and number-one seeds in conference tournaments. And congratulations to the high school marching band that competed at MetLife Stadium this past Saturday, placing 2nd and winning Best Music and Percussion Awards. On October 11th, the high school hosted the PSAT for sophomores and juniors, engaging in another step to prepare students for college readiness. And finally, the Footlights Club is hosting their October showcase from October 26th, 27th, and 28th, and is encouraging everyone to attend and is excited to put on a great show for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think they're going to name you the dynamic duo.
Thank you so much for that comprehensive report. And I just want to say, listening to all of that at the elementary school, such a foundation is being set at such a young age to show our elementary students, both the lower and upper elementary school, how important it is to have respect for others. And we do start very early with the anti-bullying education in those schools. So thank you for reporting on all of that. And just thank you to the administration and to all of the administrators of our schools that really set the foundation for respecting each other and showing our students what it means to show respect to each other. Thank you very much again for your report. The next item on our agenda is our committee reports. Do we have any committee wishing to make a report? Mr. Tofano?
Yes, before I read my committee report, I would like to personally congratulate Dr. Chanley. She's really worked hard for that title, and it says on my paper, "Ms. Chanley," so I would like to correct it, please. Dr. Chanley. Okay, we had a few items on the agenda this month, six to be exact. And number one on the agenda was the snowpiling bid. Administration provided bid results and noted that the bid package is in legal review. Unfortunately, we only had one bid on that, and we will recommend that we award that sole bidder to garden irrigation. Number two was the Woodland Playground. A design proposal for a placement playground at Woodland School was reviewed. The project is designed in three phases, and the Woodland Mill Lake PTO has offered to fund Phase 1 in the approximate amount of $16,000. I think I can speak for the whole board when I say $16,000 raised by the PTA is absolutely incredible, and I think all people in this community should be really thankful for that. Phase 2 and Phase 3 totaling nearly $150,000 could be offered for board consideration and upcoming budgeting. An additional $5,000 would be required to cover installation and freight costs to Phase 1. These funds are not allocated to 2023-2024 budget, but administration will ask the business office to identify if funds are available. The committee also requested that the administration explore potential grant opportunities for funds. Lastly, Zach Maralda will pursue a local business partnership for a donation of funds. The committee recognized the fundraising efforts of the PTO and are very appreciative that they offered those funds. Number three is the Gulf Range Building renovation for Special Services. The committee reviewed design schematics. Administration noted that the Special Services team has reviewed and approached the proposed layout. Administration will continue working with mechanical engineer on the HVAC design for the facility, as well as a civil engineer for design of the parking lot and handicap access to the facility. The committee will recommend proceedings with the project for completion of building renovations prior to the end of Monroe Commons lease on June 30th, 2024. Site work, ADA accessible ramp, and parking can be budgeted for 2024-2025 and completed in summer of 2024. Fourth thing on the agenda was the Brookside School Stopgap Interior SGI Project. Administration provided a marked-up floor plan schematic of the Brookside School Library, showing how a section of it could be subdivided to create small-group instruction classrooms that Principal Scott Sidler has indicated are a necessity for our school operations. Administration noted that similar project dividing the space was done in early 1990s to create a spare classroom while the district was experiencing overcrowding at Brookside School. The committee will recommend administration proceed to engage the architect of record to develop this project further. I'd like to make a side note on that. This class is currently being taught in the hallway, which is a big distraction to the students. So we definitely need that to be done. The fifth item on the agenda was the Annual Structural Assessment of Bleachers. The committee reviewed the engineering analysis of the stadium and high school and middle school gymnasium bleachers. As noted in the report, the stadium bleachers were properly maintained. They should be viable for another 10 years. The committee requested that this report be posted on the district website for community access, and the installation of riser boards be proposed as 2024-25 capital projects. Sixth item on the agenda was the Middle School PAC HVAC Project. Administration confirmed that the two large HVAC units serving the auditorium and surrounding areas have been received by the contractor and are being prepared. We have scheduled the crane and installation of these units to primarily occur during the week of the NJEA convention when the school is closed. The project is proceeding well and should be on target for completion by the end of December. That's it.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Tofano? Ms. Ratner? Ms. Ratner?
Um, just a quick, as one to echo the sentiments of the committee, that it's greatly appreciative of all the efforts of the PTO at Woodland Mill Lake and all the other schools as well. I know that they put in a significant amount of time. Some of them are there for hours and hours, and their work does not go unnoticed. And so I definitely wanted to just share that I really do appreciate all the work that they all, all of our parent organizations do for our district.
Yep, true.
Ms. Belko?
I have a question.
Sure.
The stadium bleachers are good for ten years. Are you talking about the bleachers at the football field?
Yes.
Okay.
They're viable for ten years.
Thank you for that answer.
Anyone else? Does any other committees have a report? Ms. Belko?
I have two committee reports. I will give you the finance committee report. I do, as always, every month, I let you know, the video is up, out on the website. Please avail yourself of that. Our curriculum committee goes for a very long time. It's hard for me to capture everything in our minutes. So, curriculum, I said, right?
Yes.
Wrong notes in front of me, I apologize.
It's okay.
I was going to start talking finance. Okay, so the curriculum committee had quite a few items for, from the curriculum supervisors. We reviewed AP Government and Politics, NTRAC's lab curriculum, which we had a colorful presentation again from Mr. Maralda. And it is the, he presented to us the entrepreneurship and marketing in the class is, what is the class? Sorry, I apologize. On check, it provides the students with a hand-on, hands-on approach to learning the entrepreneurial skills, oh my goodness, my glasses, of idea generation, creative problem solving, leadership, and evidence-based. This is a joint program with the University of Delaware. This is one of our affiliations that we're doing. And this group is going to earn three undergraduate credits from the University of Delaware once they're completed with this at a pretty reduced cost. I don't remember the number because I didn't write it down, but it is a pretty reduced cost. This group just put on the recent Women's Leadership Conference that was held here, which I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but I understand that it was, it was phenomenal and it was a really good adventure. So I'm, you know, I'm continually blown away by the opportunities we are affording our students for college credit and for just way out-of-the-box thinking when it comes to presenting curriculum to them. So I thank the committees for that. We had a review of the current math curriculums from grades two to grades five, presenting to us all of the tenants of that and the updates to the New Jersey State Student Learning Standards and those that was there. We had the United States History Two and History Two Honors Curriculum were presented, and they also, I said the AP Government, right? So yeah, those were presented and those documents are just updated to the current standards and the current items. We had a presentation about the graduation requirements. There was an adjustment that was actually brought up at policy, which I believe is going to be for first read tonight from our policy committee. Where's my, there you are, sorry. For policy tonight, so we're going to be adding five credits to, help me out.
Taking away five.
Taking away five credits, excuse me, from electives and putting it through others. Performing and practical arts, thank you. See, it's a group project, right? It's a group project. And then our student representatives spoke a little bit about the second and seven, which I think is kind of appropriate sort of football term, second and seven. It's our, our seniors from the high school are going to go to our second graders, and they're going to read to them. And it's a program that was founded by the, the elementary supervisor. She found that last year. We couldn't kind of get it off the ground last year. We're getting it off the ground this year. I ran into Mr. Berendika at the Unified Soccer Game this afternoon, and he was like a kid in a candy shop. He was very excited. He was just putting together that schedule. One of the things that he didn't tell us at the curriculum committee was, is that he's going to be trying his best. He's not going to promise that everybody's going to get to do this, but he's going to try and have the persons that are going to do the reading go back to the elementary school they attended when they were in the second grade. So I think that's kind of awesome. I think that that's, you know, really getting the kids involved, and it's going to be our, our athletes are going to be reading to them. They're going to go in their uniforms. Again, please avail yourself of the curriculum videos because that will also be on there. So that is all I have from the curriculum committee for this month. My next report is the finance committee, and the finance committee met and discussed the bills that we had for the last couple of months. We, our attorney, we reviewed the attorney fees and the attorney bills, and we are, we're right on target with that. They're not increasing. At this point, we do expect a decrease in some of the attorney fees, and the, we did review the monthly bill list. There were a few items that were called out and that were a little over the standard, you know, five to ten thousand I look at. We did make two payments to the DI group, and we also made some repairs and service to a group called KCG, and we did make that, that was from there. And then we had a large expenditure to the Ed Services for Transportation Services that also came in, in the last couple of months. We were presented with a financial report from Mr. Maralda on our summer program for summer season, actually, summer season three. And we, that, our summer program includes both the program for enrichment as well as credit completion. And the students, we had thirty-five students attend for credit completion. One hundred percent of them were able to obtain the credits, and one or two students, I think, graduated, were able to graduate with the credit completion. So that was, so that was really a good thing. Our, this was the first year we charged tuition for our credit, for our enrichment program. And we, the program rounded, wound up with a, a net price of twenty thousand dollars. Our credit completion didn't do as well financially. However, we feel the service that we're providing there is, is really something that is needed, and we're, Dr., Dr. Zach Maralda, don't want to give him that yet. I know he's working really hard at it, but he did present to us a lot of different ideas and a few different ways about how they're going to go about and do that. One of the things that, you know, it really, it's a service that we really need and we provide a lot. Unfortunately, it was not, it didn't make a lot of money. We lost forty-nine thousand on that. So we're really going to be looking at what we're going to do for that for next year and how we're going to manage that and how we're going to move forward with it and come up with some other things. He did also do a SWOT assessment on that, which was presented at the September Curriculum Committee, thank you, Dr. Lehman, September Curriculum Committee meeting, and gave us the, the strengths and the weaknesses of the programs, the opportunities and the threats. And we look forward to hearing more about how summer season four is going to come forward and how we're going to move forward with that. So that are, that is both of my committee reports for the month of October. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Belko on either of her reports? Uh, Ms. Bora, sorry.
Ms. Belko, I had a comment on the finance committee meeting. I, I did listen into it, and I was witness to the SWOT analysis that was done in the September meeting. So Mr. Maralda is very thorough with his reports, and I, I cannot even presume to give more ideas than are already running in his head, but I do want to take this opportunity to once more reiterate the need of the hour from the community to provide enrichment in maths. We are sending our students to neighboring districts, and they're paying a lot of money. So if we could add those enrichment classes where the students want to, who are in honors geometry, they want to do that over the summer and go to Algebra Two in, you know, start of the school year, they're paying two thousand dollars at the least to South Brunswick, to Petty, and then they're coming back here in testing. So, you know, that's two thousand dollars per child. I feel like we have talented teachers. Our programs are great. If we could offer those classes, that's more revenue generation opportunity for the enrichment class, which would help offset the losses in the remediation classes. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to put that comment out again, in the hopes that we will get that started soon. Thank you.
Ms. Kirby? Oh, I just want to respond to that. Ms. Kirby, if you don't mind. The, we, the committee had, because the curriculum committee ended early, I'm very surprised. Usually we go over.
Because I was not.
But the, we did have very good, healthy discussions at the end of the committee meeting about this and how we were going to move forward and, and, you know, and really try to mitigate any losses. We don't, you know, we certainly can't sustain something like that, but it is a service that we can provide for our own students. And Mr. Maralda said it best when, you know, he, it's our teachers who are teaching our curriculum, the enrichment programs, it's our teachers making curricular, the enrichment is curricular based from our curriculum and from, from our teachers. He has hired our teachers, you know, and, and it really, it's a great thing. And actually, one of the things he did talk about, which I think is really worth mentioning here, is that a lot of these teachers were high school teachers who were teaching these young elementary students and being able to kind of make those connections and, and do those kinds of things. And then there also was a, an added benefit, sort of a surprise benefit, is that some of the stuff that they bought for the enrichment programs are now into our classrooms and being used during the school year for our classes to have that enrichment as well to the curriculum. So it's all curricular based, and it's really an exciting program that I think both Mr. Maralda and Dr. Lehman should be, you know, commended for because it was something we started with the use of the ESAR funds and instead of, you know, putting it back into the students to help learning loss and to help, you know, get them back into the classroom and get them back where we need it to be. So, I'm sorry, Mr.? No, that's okay.
Yeah, no.
I just wanted to echo exactly what you were saying, Ms. Belko, can you hear me? But we also did present to Mr. Maralda a task to try to put that summer enrichment and some of those programs from our district, go out to other districts around, like what Ms. Bora said, and bring those students into here for revenue. And I'm sure he's working on it at this moment, sitting over there. And, but that was one of our ideas after the night was done. Let's bring the students back into here and use our programs and our teachers and bring them from around Middlesex County so we can bring that money in. So it's been looked at.
Yes, and one of the things, just to piggyback on, on what Katie was saying, this summer we were able to offer the first Lego League for Monroe for our students. And that came out of a community member that actually had written to me and asked me if, if our district would be interested in it, and I immediately sent it off to Mrs., Dr. Chanley, and she had forwarded that to Mr. Maralda, and he got in touch with the community member, and we were ecstatic to offer the first Lego League. And a lot of the costs associated with that is part of what Ms. Belko was, was mentioning, that we had to, we had to purchase the, the items that the students needed for that Lego League, but now that is being put down into the classes, like Ms. Belko said. So that's able to go down into our classes, and our robotics program is exploding throughout our district, and it's incredible what we are able to offer, offer to our students. Ms. Ratner?
Yep, just to sort of piggyback with that, I know that we were discussing expanding or looking into high school enrichment and possibly expanding. For our current offerings, which I know enrichment is, is K to eight, is that something where we are generally full for all of our offerings? Or I was wondering if there's the possibility of looking at expanding into outside districts? I mean, maybe Jamesburg, you guys probably have your own offerings as well, but there might be different offerings. So I wasn't sure if that's something that's a possibility.
Dr. Lehman, did you want to answer that?
So your question is, did we sell out all of our sessions in the summer for enrichment?
I was going to say, that's like the first part, did we? And if we didn't, is there the possibility? And if we didn't, is there the possibility to expand?
So many of our sessions sold out. There were a few that we had extra spaces in. One of the SWOT analysis outcomes is our registration process. We had everything go through Genesis, which, you know, is very convenient in terms of communication on the user end, right? If you're a parent and you're registering, we didn't have a mechanism in place to say five, five slots open in this class, two slots left, one slot left, kind of like when you see you're purchasing an airline ticket or whatever, you can see how many, you know, seats are left on the plane. So not knowing as a registrant what sessions were open and things, we did a lot of kind of after-action balancing of classes and balances of sections. So that's one thing we can make more efficient going through this summer program. I would say our STEM robotics pieces sold out. In order to expand those programs, we have to add staff, which we certainly could, but we would do that to address the need within the district for those specific programs before we could even potentially want to out, outgrow some of those. I think the outside-looking-in piece is probably more realistic on the remediation side of things. We believe our program is extremely strong, and we believe students even outside the district could benefit from that. And then the growth piece about, you know, we're, we're conducting a sixty-hour course right now. If there's an advancement piece, it's a hundred and twenty-hour course. So it's an additional, it's basically double the length of time in terms of either sessions or time during the day or both. So it would run almost like a separate program within our remediation slash enrichment high school credit program. And that's why we didn't take that step yet because the model for a hundred and twenty hours is drastically different, whether it's instead of three hours a day, it's six hours a day for the same length of time, or it's three hours a day for doubly amount of weeks in the summer, or some sort of balance in between. And again, it's logistics with what's available facilities-wise. So we're certainly on top of that task, but to make a jump towards credit, let's call it advancement, right, course advancement over the summer, that's the, that's the big hurdle we, we double, double the staffing expenses, right? Because it's double amount of hourly pay, and that includes all the peripheral staff, security, nurses, and things like that. So in order to make that jump, which we certainly know there's a need, we want to make sure we make that jump in a responsible way. And I would imagine if we take that step, when we take that step, it will be in small intervals so we don't oversaturate the market. Because that's not the, that's the kind of thing, if we're, we're having a student sit in class for six hours a day, not sit in class, but engaged in learning for six hours a day, they can do one course. So it's not like we could leverage, take a couple courses over the summer kind of thing. This is one, so the wider we spread it, the thinner those classes are, which means our cost per student, it goes up. So we're trying to balance all those variables.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions? All right, is there another committee that would like to give a report? Ms. Alvarez?
Hi. The policy committee met on Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Several policies were discussed, and the graduation requirement policy is back on today's board agenda for first read. We had to adjust the credit requirements, as Ms. Belko stated. We removed, or the district is removing five credits from performing practical and visual arts and adding five credits to the electives. So if students still want to take a second class in art or performing arts, they still can. We also discussed several policies. The first one is religion in schools. Minor revisions were recommended in the titles included in the two thousand twenty-three guidance. The examination for cause policy is being revised to better outline the process a school district must use when a board of vet or superintendent wants to require a physical or psychiatric examination of a school district employee when a staff member shows evidence of deviation from normal physical or mental health. The attendance policy, the provision in the legislation signed on July third, expanding allowable use of sick time for school employees, requires revision to the current policy and regulation to reference the revised statute. This is a mandated policy. We also had a nice discussion on the right of privacy policy. The policy is being revised to protect the privacy rights of school staff members while the school staff member is performing their board-assigned job responsibilities from unauthorized audio and video recordings by students and other staff members. Any recording is prohibited without the approval of the staff member's principal or supervisor. Exceptions will be made for school-sponsored activities that are open to the public. And we had a discussion about making sure that our code of conduct is going to reflect consequences for violations of this policy. Then we discussed the eligibility of homeless children and youths, which is a mandated policy. There were revisions to NJSA eighteen A thirty-eight-three, requiring the payment of tuition as the board prescribes. The board with the approval of the executive county superintendent shall establish a uniform tuition amount for any non-resident student admitted to the school of the district. And additionally, the term homeless child is And additionally, the term homeless child is being revised to homeless child and youth, and that's being updated throughout the policy and regulation guide. And then finally, we talked about food services. It's a mandated policy that is being revised as a result of the Working Class Families Anti-Hunger Act, which created a new statute sections, and the revisions to the statutes and the newly created statutes require extensive revisions to policy guides 8500, 8540, and 8550. And then three policies were abolished, the Bridge Year Pilot Program, School Nutrition Programs, and Meal Charges Outstanding Food Service Bill. And that concludes the report.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Alvarez? Okay, is there another committee wishing to give a report? Ms. Fabiano?
On Wednesday, October 11th, the Legislative Action and Community Engagement Committee met. The first item on our agenda was the letter-writing campaign. After months of back-and-forth discussion, we are going to be moving forward at our meeting next month to finalize and publish the letter to our website. Dr. Chanley stated that Mr. Moraleda would share the latest version of the letter with the committee so that we can make final edits and have it published hopefully for November. The next item that we discussed was social media and website updates. Mr. Moraleda shared that updates have been gradually happening to our current site and that the administration is potentially looking at a complete overhaul to the district page. The district's social media platforms have been very active. Administration is exploring a new program, GIPR, I think is what it's called, to utilize in pushing out information through scheduled posts on various social platforms. Next, we talked about the Citizens Advisory Committee and the potential value and usefulness of having one. Ms. Ratner presented the different ways a Citizens Advisory Committee is utilized in several other districts, and we will continue our discussion of this at next month's meeting. We also talked about updates from the Middlesex County School Boards Meeting that occurred on October 4th. New Jersey School Boards shared various fiscal year 2024 budget highlights, new education laws, and a roadmap of what the legislature will look like, basically a lame duck session until January 2024. There was information shared about the new online forum for board members called NJSBA Connection, and there was also a discussion about the importance of all information being shared with all board members unless convicted, conflicted as soon as information is obtained. Board members from various districts shared some of the ways they communicate within the board. Finally, Ms. Ratner shared that she would be attending the NJSBA Legislative Committee meeting that was held this past Saturday on October 14th. There are also several members of our Board of Education and Administration attending the NJSBA workshop next week, so next month, we'll be spending some time getting updates on all those meetings.
Right, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Fabiano? No? Ms. Bora, you want to give the personnel update?
Yes, please. The Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, October 11th. The board members in attendance were myself, Mr. Tofano, Ms. Scott, Ms. Kirby, and the administrator in attendance was Dr. Chanley. We reviewed the current openings in the district. At the time of the meeting, we had 37 vacancies, 19 due to resignations, one due to retirement, nine due to transfers, seven due to leave, and one due to non-renewal. We had five responses to our exit survey, and the reasons cited were change of profession and accepting positions in other districts, with one specifically accepting a position closer to home. A new job description for the truancy attendance officer was presented to the committee. This role is currently being fulfilled by staff members in each of our schools ever since the change in roles and responsibility related to residency and truancy that was made a year ago, and a job description has now been finalized. The committee recommends this be approved by the board tonight. The committee was also informed about a substitute rate change due to the new legal minimum wages in New Jersey that went up by a dollar to $15.13. This will be the new rate for substitute secretary, paraprofessionals, and avid tutors, and this will be effective January 1st of 2024 and is on the agenda tonight for approval. This concludes the committee's report.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Bora? All right, seeing none, that concludes our committee reports. The next item on the agenda is our public forum for agenda items only. Anybody wishing to speak and address the board, please come to the microphone and state your name and municipality, and you have four minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Pradeep Melem, Monroe Township. Why didn't we discuss about September committee meetings? So, are we going to leave them in the air without discussing about those actions or like takeaways or anything? Because after September committee meeting, this is the official board meeting. That's my point number one. Any answer?
Can you state all of your questions upfront, and then we'll answer them at the end?
Oh, okay. Okay, so congratulations to Dr. Chanley, and congratulations to Ms. Ratner for becoming an NJSBA voting member in the Executive Board, and congratulations to the newly appointed So can I talk about like September committee meetings? Is that part of the agenda items or not?
The September committee meetings?
Yes.
Well, we had our committee reports, so that would encompass what's been going on in our committees.
No, the committees, so you guys didn't discuss about September actions or September committee reports, so that's why my question is so specific. Okay, regarding that, there was a discussion about like a $10 million ROD grants that is allotted by the state government, and the state is going to share about like $4 million, and then we have to show them $6 million on that one. So, and the, it is specifically you're going to use for Apple Garth and telephone system chute, roof of Apple Garth and HVAC in the Apple Garth. So in the discussion, in the BGNT, it was meant, it was, it was announced that the roof is going to cost 3.5 million, but there was a design study is going on with DGI that is approved in the last budget, and it is being done. Is that completed, or is the report ready, or is this an approximation of 3.5 million? That is my another question. And in the same September meetings, in the, in the Legislative Action Committee meeting, in the letter-writing campaign, the numbers are a little skewed. It was meant 4.3 million for roof of Apple Garth and 7.1 million for HVAC, while discussing in the BGNT meeting, 6.6 million for HVAC is allocated. So there is a discrepancy in the numbers. So which number is correct ones? And in the, in the curriculum meeting of September, there is an AP capstone offering that is approved or discussed. That is one of the greatest one, which counts as two AP courses and, which is really good for any stream of the kids irrespective of anything, irrespective of their stream they are looking into it. So, that's my comment. And the next question is, how many candidates are applied for vacancy board position, and how many are being called for interview, and how many are not being called for interview? Those who are not called for the interview, are they technically qualified or not? These are my questions.
Okay. Do you want to speak on the Apple Garth?
What I would, hello? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Malam, and thank you very much of your congratulatory statement. You, you would have to probably just email me offline, or you're welcome to reach out to me via phone. I'd like to have that conversation directly with Mr. Take. The conversation that we had was that we needed approximately $10 million to move forward, and if there's a discrepancy or a flip, as you said, in the two prices, of course, I will confirm that, and I will speak with Mr. Take. But the conversation was around the fact that we received our letters from the state of New Jersey that they would be giving us $4 million, which constitutes 40% of the entire project. There was a $1 million that was given, or given, that, that I believe at this time we have received actually, if I'm not mistaken.
Through resolution.
The resolution.
That's correct.
To accept the $1 million, which was part of the money that Ms. Green Stein went ahead and moved forward to get us. So that would leave a $5 million need. We did have a meeting with the Monroe Township.
Sorry to interrupt you. So, the, the money, we have to show the $6 million, and out of that, you are showing the, the $1 million that is from the government itself, you are showing as our part of it.
Five. So $4 million is what we get from the state, because it's 40% of $10 million. $1 million that was additional is five, leaves an additional $5 million that we would need to secure in order to be able to utilize the money from the state to move forward to complete the project.
Yes.
So, so what we did was, we had a meeting, and we're waiting, we're waiting for next steps and, and what the end result will be. We presented our needs, and we, we presented what we needed from them as a township and how they could help us, and there was various different members. The mayor was not present, council was present, our bond council was present, myself, Mr. Take, Dr. Lehman was present as well, and that was the conversation. At this time, I have nothing I could share on that as far as anything that's been confirmed, but that's what you referred.
Sorry, my, my question is not about like how this $10 million number is arrived or anything. So, is the design completed by the DGA for the roof, design study?
Yes, there was a design study that was conducted by DI Group.
DI Group, yeah, but that was not like, okay, so, but in one committee, we are saying that roof requires 3.5 million, and in another committee, we are saying roof requires 4.3 million. And in one committee for HVAC, we are saying 6.6 millions. In another committee, we are saying 7.1 millions.
Okay, so what I'm going to let you know, because I do not want to throw out numbers with Mr. Take, who happens to not be present, is my understanding the entire project is a total of $10 million. That is that we went to the state with, they came back with 40%, which is $4 million. We had an additional million, which is five. We are in need of five. As far as how that money is separated, I'd be happy to have that conversation with you. Mr. Take present, as well as if you prefer to write your questions in writing and send an email, I could have them answered as well, but I won't give specific information because I do not want to be an error, because Mr. Take is not here and I do not have the numbers in front of me.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. The other question, it should be you.
And you, you had a question regarding how many people had applied for the vacant position. There were nine applicants in total. One we received after the deadline, and one of the applicants rescinded their application afterwards.
Okay, how many are called for interview?
How many are?
Are selected for interview?
How many selected for interview?
How many were selected for an interview? We had, well, we had no interviews this evening.
Not today, but there was an email sent to at least eight candidates that they are selected or not selected for interviews.
Yes, there were three.
There were three selected.
That the board had selected.
What is the criteria for selection? Because in the policy 0143, in our bylaws, there is no selection process or anything handpicking of applied candidates. All the applied candidates should be interviewed in the public session, and the vacancy-related discussion should be happened in the public session.
Sure, I'm going to ask Mr. Gagliardi if he would speak upon that.
So the, neither statute nor code, nor the policy you cite, identify how or if you select candidates for interviews. So it doesn't say every candidate should be interviewed. It says that if someone is going to be considered, that they should be interviewed. So, the board solicited, the board president solicited input from board members as to who they want, wanted to interview. Invitations were extended, but the board didn't have a quarm to conduct business, so no interviews were conducted there. And as I said earlier, the 65-day process for the board to do what it set out to do under that policy expired. I'm sorry, what's that, sir?
You completely deviated my point. So there is no selection process defined in our policy.
Correct.
So how people are handpicked?
How people are?
Selected for interview. They should be interviewed for everyone.
I, I, I understand that's your preference. I'm just telling you that, that the policy doesn't require that every person who submits an application be interviewed. It says that before someone is considered by the board to fill the position, they need to be interviewed in public, and that's what would have happened at the last meeting.
Even that wording is also not there. It says all the candidates applied should be interviewed in the public session.
The public, the policy does not say that.
It doesn't say all, but the candidates shows requested or should, should be interviewed in the public session and should be asked the same questions. It is there in the policy, 0135.
Yeah, I, I understand your point, but you're inserting the word "all."
I am not inserting the "all," and you are inserting the selection process.
Okay, I, I understand your point, sir. I'm not, I'm here to answer your question, I did it, I'm not here to debate. I think I've answered your question. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board?
At this point, Dr. Chanley, congratulations. I ask, under which Open Public Meetings Act exception was the board vacancy discussed in closed session? That's my question.
Do you have any other questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, Mr. Gagliardi, can you answer that?
Sure. So, the process for selecting the candidate this evening was directed by the county superintendent. So, the board president had some communications with the county superintendent. I had communications with the county superintendent, and I conveyed my legal advice as to how the board should and should not respond to the directive from the county superintendent consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act in executive session.
Okay, so which exception are you recommending, did, or was recommended to go into closed session? Because I don't see that any discussion should have been in closed session. This is, this should have been in public from the very beginning. So, there are nine exceptions in the Open Public Meetings Act. What, which exception did the board go by? There are nine of them. You can't, you can't go into closed session except for those nine. So which exception is it?
So again, I, I, I don't think I'm running for office, and I don't think I'm here to debate anybody. You asked a question, I answered it. I am confident that I was entitled to give advice to my client in executive session consistent with what the county superintendent was doing under the statute, and that's what I did.
Okay, thank you. It, it doesn't seem that the Open Public Meetings Act exception was even considered.
Well, you, you're well aware of the fact that the attorney-client privilege is one of those exceptions that you mentioned, right?
Yeah, but you, oh, of course, but that wasn't stated in the resolution. The resolution was, I think the second thing was attorney-client privilege, and then the fourth thing was board vacancy, which was not considered as explained under the attorney-client privilege. We could discuss that, that semantics, we don't have to take the public's, but just very disappointing, because good government and proper practices of democratic procedures are more important to me than any personal benefit I might have derived from remaining silent. And I don't, I think we're going down a very scary rabbit hole by not adhering to democratic practices and people doing things behind closed doors, and it is unfortunate that we are actually detracting from the gains made over the years of putting things in public, of having the public witness deliberation, and having all sides discuss what's going on and not have a certain amount rules, majority rules, to the detriment of, to, of all others, including the public.
Thank you for your comments.
I still have a minute forty. I would like to expressly state that I do agree that the bylaw of 0143 should be reviewed. I, I do think it says, that bylaw says you will interview candidates in public, and the board will vote to appoint candidates to the vacancy in public as well. And I just want to point out that the children, our, our board members, our, our student council members, talk about respect, talk about the foundation of decency, and I don't know what happens when it gets to adulthood, because it's not being, it's not being witnessed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gagliardi?
So I think it's, to, to Mrs. Arminio's point, and I have a lot of respect for her, but I want to draw a distinction between the policy cited by the last two speakers and what went on here this evening. First of all, I, I can say with great confidence that I had no idea how the vote was going to go tonight, and I don't know that anyone sitting up here knows. So I don't want the public to get the impression that the board behaved unlawfully. I also want the public to understand, even though it seems like a small distinction, the difference between the board's policy that was discussed and what went on here tonight. The board had 65 days to effectuate the filling of that vacancy consistent with that policy and did not do so. How and why is not the point of my commentary. Once those 65 days expired, the county superintendent exercised his authority to say majority rules. So unlike what you read in the policy, even if the policy So unlike what you read in the policy, even if the policy did require that the board in filling the vacancy interview every candidate, I don't think it says that, but even if it did, the board tonight had the discretion as to whether or not to interview candidates, because it wasn't operating under that policy, it was operating under the county superintendent saying, "You figure out a way to fix this." The county superintendent could have drawn names out of a hat, could have had a round robin, rock, paper, scissors tournament, as long as he was gonna be picking someone who is domiciled in this community, is over the age of majority, and can read and write those are the statutory requirements to serve on a board, that person would have been eligible to serve. So while citizens are free to disagree over how the board chose to fill the candidate tonight, I don't want the citizens of this community to be of the impression that the board skirted the statute, or the board somehow behaved unlawfully. The board had a mandate directed by the county superintendent. I gave the board president in advance of this meeting, my assessment of what could and couldn't happen, I conveyed to the Board of Education the process this evening, the board had a lot of opinions about what could and couldn't happen, I did my best to give legal advice, and I'm also, again, underscoring for the benefit of this community, that while there may have been indications by board members whom they would and would not support, the vote that you saw this evening was the only vote, and again, I don't know that there's anybody up here who would have been able to tell you before the board members came out here, how that, a vote was gonna go. So disagree with the choice, disagree with how the board exercised its authority, that's not my point. I just want the community to be confident that the board behaved lawfully in following the directive given by the county superintendent. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening, Doug Poy, Monroe Township. I have two rather specific questions about board action items under the 10-member vote. Item M, item M of the 10-member vote board action deals with a contract with the North Brunswick Aquatic Center. My question is, is this the first year that we're using that facility? Another question related to that is, who was used last year? And why is there a limit on the number of practice, practice sessions that can be held at that facility? All right, that's item M. Under item O, where you are approving snow removal, could you please explain how that contract will work in the event that there is no snow, or very little snow, or if there's an excessive amount of snow, because you are contracting for a specific dollar amount? And then finally, I do have a comment concerning your closed session tonight, where you discussed the vacancy on the board, and it's already been addressed by several members of the public. As you know, you originally planned to interview candidates for the position at your September meeting, which we're well aware of, was canceled due to a lack of quorum. And your attorney tonight has stated more than once that the 65 days required to fill the vacancy expired. My question is, on what date did that expiration occur? I would assume it would be 65 days from the board meeting at which Ms. Berman's resignation was accepted. So I would think that that would therefore take the 65 days somewhere into the month of September, possibly even later, because I believe she retired in August, so 65 days would probably actually have taken her into October.
It was October 13th.
Okay, October 13th. Now, to me, it seems that this whole conundrum could have been avoided, because I did a little research on your bylaws, and bylaw policy number 0163 deals with a quorum. And it sheds light on the action that should have occurred when no quorum was present. And I read to you excerpts from that particular bylaw. "All boardings, all board meetings shall commence not later than 8 o'clock. If a quorum is not present at the time for which the meeting is called, the board member or members may recess the meeting to a time not later than 9:00 PM. And if a quorum be not present at that time, the member or members present may adjourn the meeting to commence not later than 8:00 PM of another day, but not more than seven days following the date of which the original meeting was called." So it seems to me as if there was a whole week in which you could have had a second meeting after the September 20 meeting was not held. And I'd like to know why you did not follow that policy, because, and you could have even had a special meeting, not your full monthly September meeting, you could have even had a special meeting where you could have conducted those interviews and therefore not have, in my opinion, violated some of your own bylaws.
Thank you, Mr. Poy. As far as I know, and if I can ask Mr. Gagliardi to comment down on that, the board did not violate any board policy on that. We followed our policy with legal advice from our board attorney, and in order to call a special meeting or to have adjourned to another date, I needed to have a quorum of the board agree to come to a special meeting. And this board made it very clear, when we had conversations about the process for how we were going to fill the vacancy, that they did not wish to call a special meeting, they wanted to do it at a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, that was on September 20th. So I could have called another meeting, and we could have sat here, we could have not had a quorum again, I did not want to have that happen again. And I will ask Mr. Gagliardi to speak about the lawfulness of the board in following that policy that evening, as I know you were here and you did advise the board what to do.
So I, I'm well aware of the fact that the quality of a board meeting is inversely proportional to how much you hear from the attorney, so I want to be brief. What you read, sir, is absolutely correct, the board had the discretion to do what you described, in both cases, in terms of adjourning the meeting and scheduling a different meeting, it's may, however, it's permissive, it's not required. And for the reasons articulated by the board president, the board did not do that, but you're right, that authority did exist, and does exist.
My time is up, but, but there are some clarification points, and I suggest that all members of the board take a careful read of your policy on quorum 0163.
Thank you, Mr. Poy.
You're welcome.
And I know you did have a question regarding the snow removal policy, Ms., sure. Dr. Lehman?
Do you want to do the pool one as well?
You could do the pool first, the North Brunswick Aquatic Center.
So, Mr. Poy, the, the pool, the North Brunswick Aquatic Center, that is our home pool for our swim team, it is a traditional pool that has, I guess, the best way to describe it is hard sides. Our practice pool, we practice at Apex Pools, that's a soft-sided pool, so what that contract is, it contracts us to conduct our home meets at the North Brunswick Aquatic Center, we used them last year, and then the defined practice schedule is, was requested by the swim coach, so in lieu of practicing for those dates at Apex, they will practice at North Brunswick, so they can practice their kicks and their turns and their starts, that's something they can do on a regular basis at Apex, so that's the purpose for North Brunswick Aquatic Center, this is year two for the contract. Regarding snow removal, we don't pay anything if there's no snow, and then there is an inch threshold in which they, we can handle locally, and then they come in and it's a per-inch charge after the inch threshold. I'll have to check with Mr. Take about what that exact inch is, I believe it's three to five inches over a certain period of time, and then they would come in and they would pick up that snow removal piece, but I think it's important to note that when there is no snow, we are not contracted or bound to expend any funds towards snow removal. Yep.
Is there anybody else wishing to address the board?
Sarah, is, I live in Monroe Township, I'm also here to object to the lack of transparency surrounding the filling of this board position, I know there are Oprah requests made to find out the list of candidates who had applied, and that Oprah request was denied, the public was not allowed to see the names of the candidates, or review their resumes, or assess their qualifications, and I do have a copy of board policy 0143. It states, "In considering candidates who have expressed an interest in a vacancy, the Board of Education will interview interested candidates in public." It doesn't say "may," it says "will." It also says, "The representative of the Jamesburg Board of Education is not entitled to vote to fill a vacancy on the Monroe Township Board of Education," and yet Ms. Scott, our Jamesburg rep, voted on this matter. And I know the explanations, I heard the explanations Mr. Gagliardi provided, and I just want to make it clear that I understand him, is Mr. Gagliardi saying that the county superintendent has the power to authorize the board to violate its own policy or statute? Was, when Mr., when the county superintendent Kyle Anderson said, "Figure it out, you know, board majority," was, did the board make him aware of policy 0143? Was he made aware that the Jamesburg board member could not vote? Was he made aware that the, the interviews will be conducted in public per the policy?
Would you like to address that, Madam President?
Yes, please, Mr. Gagliardi, again.
So, as to the interviews, okay, it says that interested candidates will be interviewed in public, that is, they wouldn't be interviewed in private. It doesn't require that all interested candidates be interviewed, so I am confident that there were no private interviews, and for those who were here last month, the interviews, if they took place, would have been taking place in public. So I'm confident the board didn't violate that. It does not require that every candidate be interviewed, it says all interested candidates will be interviewed in public, that is to say, the interviews will be public and not private. As far as that policy is concerned, and I, I wanted, I hope to have made myself clear, but maybe I didn't, the county superintendent, by the way, was made aware of that policy, but we weren't acting pursuant to or in violation of that policy. The county superintendent's view was, and I assume remains, "You folks know better who you want to work with than I do, so you folks select a candidate, majority rules," and that majority included the Jamesburg representative. The county superintendent was aware of the fact that there was a difference of opinion under policy and under law about whether or not the Jamesburg representative was entitled to vote. I don't believe that issue has been resolved, but for the purposes of this evening, it did not need to be resolved, because the board wasn't acting pursuant to that policy or pursuant to its statutory authority, which had expired. So that policy cannot be used to guide the board, because the 65 days had run, the board is not acting pursuant to its statutory policy, the board is acting pursuant to the county superintendent's directive, majority rules, and that's what you saw unfold here this evening.
Well, when I'm reading the policy, it doesn't say that it's no longer valid after 65 days, I mean, it seems to me that you're saying the county superintendent Kyle Anderson doesn't care that the policy explicitly states that the Jamesburg rep is not entitled to vote on a vacancy on the Monroe Township Board of Education.
Well, heavens, I certainly didn't say that. The county superintendent is as involved with the Monroe Township Board of Education as any district in this county, I assure you. But I want to underscore, the county superintendent, well, first of all, the board's policy can't trump statute, the statute says the board can fill the vacancy within 65 days. After 65 days, it doesn't matter what that policy says, the board's authority has expired, the county superintendent takes over, and he has unfettered discretion as to how that vacancy is gonna be filled. He exercised that discretion and said, "You folks, figure it out, majority rules," and was well aware at the time he said that, that there was a dispute over the Jamesburg representative's statutory right, but that had expired with the 65 days. So this board is subject to his authority, he exercised that authority, and I'm confident that the board acted pursuant to his directive this evening.
Can you list the, the name and the number of the specific statute that you're referencing?
I can, I can reference it for you.
Yes, please.
Without interrupting you? I have a great one.
I'm tired of hearing myself, so please, dive in.
I have, because, because I consulted with our council for my, for my Board of Education, for Jamesburg, to get directive as to what I am allowed to and allowed to do, as this discussion went on for several weeks. NJSA 18A colon 38-8 enunciates those matters on which a sending district is eligible to vote on receiving districts' board. I won't go into total length, you're free to go look it up, but there was a case, Evans versus Atlantic City, where these, the interpretation of what rights the sending district is allowed to vote on. NJ, NJS 18A colon 38-8 dot 1I was when it was amended in 2017, and it states that "Any matter concerning governance of the receiving district Board of Education, including but not limited to the selection of the board president, vice president, approval of board bylaws, and the employment of professionals or consultants such as attorneys, architects, engineers, or others that provide services to the receiving district Board of Education." The emphasis is on any matter concerning governance, which, which this would fall under, and "any" is broad term and can be interpreted, it's, maybe, may have been interpreted one way by our council and by Monroe's council separately, but policy, law always trumps policy. So the law in this case is still somewhat gray, but it does say "any," and then once the super, the county superintendent got involved, the county oversees all of the districts, and what they decide supersedes anything that we would have as, that Monroe would have as a policy. So what the county superintendent says is what goes.
And I, here's my final point on this issue, and I really do hope it's my final point. The vote tonight, as I recall it, and the board secretary can correct me, was 6-2 with one abstention, right?
Yes, yes.
Am I correct?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so that even if the Jamesburg representative didn't vote, the result would have been precisely the same. So I, I, I want to underscore, the county superintendent exercised his authority lawfully, but even if everything we've said so far is wrong about the participation of the Jamesburg representative, the vote would have been the same, it would have carried, the seat would have been filled, just as you saw here this evening. So I, I hope that resolves the matter for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Well, you know, many board members here campaigned on the issue of transparency, and I feel like the public had a right to know who the candidates were, had a right to watch them being interviewed, had a right to see their qualifications, and it's, it's unfortunate that they were not given this right in this case. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else wishing to address the board? Good evening.
Good evening, George Gunkelman, Monroe Township. I don't want to talk about the laws, attorney can rest for a moment here, but I would like to talk about reception, there are only a few opportunities, there are only a few opportunities that the population of Monroe gets to interact with our school. One is when we have school board elections. Obviously, in this case, there was no opportunity to have a, a group of candidates present themselves, but you managed to do it in a way where no, no candidates were able to represent themselves to the public. So we go from a position where it's, everyone gets to vote, to a position where no one gets to vote, and there is no public viewing of the process at all, it was done in closed session. So when you come back to us after there's been the loss of a referendum, and weep about why the public is not supporting you, think about it. Because you don't provide that transparency that you claim to foster, you've bypassed it, and you've bypassed the community's right to have a say in it, and then you're surprised by how they react when they do get an opportunity, and it's not a vote of confidence, and now you've moved the election to April, or May, I forget which, and you know that a very small percentage of the public is gonna vote at that time. It, it's just, we need to get community support, and it seems that you're doing everything possible to, to get rid of it, and it's just a tragedy, and it, you know, a lot of us vote even when we're unhappy with the proposals, just because we want to support this. we want to support this school and the education they get, but you're not helping us do that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Vanessa Forrest, Monroe Township. I totally agree with what he just said, and that's why I'm here. I have a different way of expressing myself, though. I believe, excuse me, I believe that what happened last month at the meeting was atrocious. It was awful, and it was, you know, people weren't able to attend for whatever reason, and you've moved meetings before, for other reasons. And you spent too much time speaking off the cuff, I guess, like you said, where people were reading from their phones and making speeches about members that were not here to defend themselves, or had other places they needed to be or could not attend. And you have moved meetings before for other reasons. So, I don't understand why that you could not have moved the meeting and allowed the public to participate in, you know, seeing the different candidates for the board. I have, I do not know this gentleman, I do not know anything about him. Why? Because you guys decided to do this behind closed doors. It almost seemed like a plot. You know, you waited out the 65 days, just so you could do whatever you wanted, and that's not fair to the public. It's not fair. You could have moved the meeting, and that's it. And everybody knows it. The public knows it, everybody knows it. You can sit here and you can say whatever you want, you could say, "Oh, you did, you know, 65 days, we could do what we want." That's what we were told by the county superintendent. But that was the whole point, wasn't it? Because you wanted to do what you wanted. That's all.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum. The next item on our agenda is Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman?
Sure, thank you. Mr. Tags, can you fire up the projector? Thank you. So, I'm going to take the Assistant Superintendent's Report, opportunity to share some of our test scores. I have a NJSLA breakdown, and then Mr. Maraldo's going to come up, and he's going to speak to some of our AP scores. I will have all this posted to the website in the morning, so everyone can download it. I will preface this by, it is an expanded analysis with a tremendous amount of numbers, so I will take you through, give you some highlights from each page, but feel free to dig in and take a look around. And while this fires up, we can get ready to go. I wanted to thank the high school band, we had, a marching band, we had our home show this weekend, and I know we talked, the student board report talked about the competition in MetLife, that was a couple of weeks ago. We did welcome, there were 18 bands scheduled, I believe 16 or 15 of them showed up because we transitioned from outside competition to inside competition. And just congratulations, we've hosted it, I believe it's 18 years in a row, this is our 18th annual home show. So, congratulations to the staff and students involved with the band competition this weekend, and good luck to all of our sports, because I know we're still moving ahead in many of our sports in the state tournament. Okay, so, Mr. Tags, I'll give you the thumbs up when we're ready to kind of flip through. Again, this is a lot of numbers, and it's intentionally done that so we can be totally transparent, and you can see everything you ever wanted to see, and then some on test scores. So, again, I will do some highlights, I'm going to try and do it with my back to the screen. And I know, especially towards the end, the numbers will be very small. Again, the intention is to have everything out there in terms of information, but again, this will be posted on the website, it'll be a one big PDF file with everything that you would ever want about our test scores this past school year. All right, so, next slide. So, the first series of slides breaks down grades three through nine, and our test scores based on level. There's five levels in the NJSLA, it's given in math and language arts, and we have grades three through nine displayed up here. As we get into math, there's some intricacies as they move into eighth grade, and Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II break out into different subgroups and things. But, the general comment related to this is, our test scores are where we expect them to be. We are above the state average, where we need to be above the state average, and well above the state average. Where we need to be under the state average, we are under the state average. So, on this slide here, one of the, one of the things, and we dig into this pretty deep, you can identify, and if you can't see it from where you're sitting, over on the right you'll see a minus 10 and then a 17. Those are changes, percent changes, from level four to level five. What that tells us is, we actually, and this is ELA, we have a cohort or a bubble of students that are really high performing in language arts. So, as they move through from grade seven to eight, and grade six to seven, we can see a bubble of their increased scores, but when they step away, the norm comes back. So, you see a decrease where they were, and you see an increase where they're going. So, they left, that year they left grade seven, they went to grade eight. So, that when they left grade seven, we went back to our normal score performance, and when they entered grade eight, that bubble, that interest, and again, when we look at data like this, we're a big district, we have a wide diverse population, we look for consistent scores year to year. And the variation we get, percentage points, three, four, or five percentage points, usually has to do with our programs that the students are engaged in. Maybe one group has a higher percentage of ELLs moving through, or students with IAPs, or more males or more females. So, the data, as we move through, we see subtle variations, but this is a unique piece in terms of seeing something that moves the needle this much in ELA between grade seven and eight, which is interesting. What that tells us is, as they move into high school, I would expect to see potentially an increase in AP interest, taking some of the AP courses, so maybe we, on the proactive side, try and schedule some extra courses as we see them kind of moving forward. But that's just a unique kind of piece of data. Next slide. So, this is mathematics, and again, we see a little subtle move. So, our grade three, we had, we have a grade three to grade four bubble, and we also have a grade seven to grade eight bubble. So, you see the minus eight and the minus seven. That's a student population, district-wide, that has a strength in math, they're showing it in their, in this one data point, and as they move, we go revert back to our normal test scores when they leave, and they bump up the test score in the next grade level. So, it's kind of like, almost when you see a bubble of enrollment. You have four sections of grade five, they moved to grade six, you need a fifth section, that kind of stuff. All right, next slide. What I included this year is how many students took the test. Now, this is different, this is not student enrollment, this is tests taken. So, there's a difference. Not everyone that's in our school system takes these standardized tests for various reasons, whether they are English language learners who are exempt from exams sometimes, based on how much time they spend in the country. We also have students that have alternate assessments. But this shows us just cohorts of students, how many tests were given, and again, a natural fluctuation of whatever program's function of how many students would take a test each year. Next slide. That was ELA, this is math. And again, it's managed differently. One thing you can see here, and we'll hit on it again as we get a little deeper in here, see, the grade eight has an asterisk. So, what happens in grade eight is, that's when we see the diversion of students taking grade eight math versus geometry versus Algebra I. So, we start to see students begin to take a different path. So, that's why you see 372 and then 368 exams given in grade eight, but we have a huge number of Algebra students taking an exam. So, that reflects, we have a large population that takes Algebra, and that's reflected in how many exams are given. Next slide. And you'll see that as we go through with test scores and things like that. When we pull off certain student populations, it impacts the remaining population and what those scores look like. So, the next series of slides, so it would be the next three slides, are specific to language arts, and we do an even deeper breakout of the levels, and we compare them to state, state-reported levels. So, for instance, this is level one and level two, we have multiple years here, our scores are in blue, the state scores are in white columns, and as you could see, and these are the points where we would want to be below the state averages, and we are well below the state averages. Now, if we look at students, year to year, we can look across, so you can look grade three and across the row, that's two different groups of students taking a grade three exam. Or, if you want to look at a cohort of students, you look at grade three in 2022, then you go down to grade four over to 2023. Those are the same students, just taking a different exam in a different school year. And again, results here, there aren't eye-popping surprises here. We see growth where we need to see growth, and we see consistency in the majority of the areas. Again, we have such a large population taking exams that, at the district level, the variations are pretty consistent. All right, next slide. Again, this is, we're breaking out level threes and fours here by grade level compared to the state, and then the next slide is level fives. And again, this is where we want to be above the state, we're well above the state, level fours, right? So, this is encouraging for us. And I'm a data guy, I did my dissertation on data, I live in data, I like data. I don't get excited over one data point. So, this is one piece of one student's information, this is one piece of one of our district data points. I don't live and die by this. If this, everybody got 100 here, I'd have the same reaction as if everybody got zero, in terms of what else do we need to look at to verify that this is accurate, right? And that's what we do. So, this is great that we're below the state and we're consistent, but this tells us one piece of a multiple data, multiple databases that we use with students. And again, this is a test that was given in the spring of last year, we're like six months after it. These data come in, not in the most timely fashion, and I'll talk about what we use instructionally towards the end of the presentation. Next slide. So, the next, and this is what I talked about here earlier, the next set of slides is the same kind of breakdown, grades, level one, two, and then three, four, and five compared to state. But this is the, and this is what the state wants us to communicate, by the time you get to grade eight, people start to take different paths. So, the grade eight data doesn't represent the grade eight sitting in the middle school. In order to take a snapshot at grade eight sitting at the middle school, you'd have to factor in the students that are taking Algebra I and geometry to kind of get a total assessment. So, what this does is, this breaks down the students who took grade eight math, and then the students in the district who took Algebra I, Algebra II, and geometry. So, next slide. And you can see it down there at the bottom, we have Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II broken out separately. And then, that grade eight, that's probably half the amount of students, maybe, maybe a little more than half, maybe 60% of our students are in grade eight math. The other 40% are pushed down into that Algebra, and even into geometry. And you see, and you see that across the board, we're filtering off a specific group of students, and the students that are in that eighth grade math have a different profile, and that's why you see different results in different percentages. And again, this is consistent, we're far below the state where we need to be, and we're above the state where we want to be. Next slide, this is levels three and four. And then, next slide is level five. And again, if you look at, you know, just grade three, 30% of our students in the district relative to the state last year, at 12.6, this year, 23%, 11.9. This is that group I told you, in 2022, they went, and in grade, that's that bubble, they went in grade four, and you see that increase from 17 to 21. So, we're back to the norm in grade three, and we're a little above the norm in grade four. That's one of those bubbles I talked about earlier. Next slide. So, the next series of slides, we break out, so the middle school, when we look at grade seven and grade six data, we have one middle school, that represents the middle school. Grade nine is our one high school. If we had multiple high schools, multiple middle schools, we'd do the same. This next set of slides breaks our elementary schools out into, basically, by grade level. So, it's grade three, four, or five, and then in ELA, and then three, four, or five in math. So, what you see here, and the number one indicator in student success across the board nationwide, is social economic status, SES. Non-debatable, 100%. We see that in our district. We see that one of our schools consistently outperforms some of the other schools. In this case, Brookside and Mill Lake are our title schools on this list. We allocate title funds to do specific title-related programs, and I'll highlight some of those at the end, to close the gap between that opportunity that, because the instruction's the same across the board, the curriculum is the same across the board, the SES piece, when it comes to student data, is relates to experiences and opportunities that students get outside of school. And that influence that that happens on instruction and what the, what students bring to the, to the table when they come to class. So, that's what, we see that in our district. We're unique in the sense that we are geographically large enough that we see that kind of spread. And it's not something we've, we talk about often, but we definitely have different parts of town here, and they operate a little differently. That's why we utilize our title funds the way we do. We allocate professional development to target our title schools, we allocate our title funds to target specific programs to support students in those, in those title schools. And so, you know, this is a good example, if you look at the level fours ratings and the level five ratings, there, that's where your difference is. That's where your difference is, between the Oak Tree and Mill Lake and Brookside. The instruction, the teachers are amazing, we just, we are moving our students in a different way. All right, so, grade four, next slide. On this slide, our title schools are Brookside and Woodland. Grade five. Now, as they get older, you see that gap close a little bit, right? They're in our schools longer, our programs are influencing the students, we are, we have been targeting and supporting our students. So, now, if we look at the difference between four and five, between, say, Applegarth, Brookside, and Woodland, those gaps have significantly contracted, and that's efforts related to specific targeted funding and differentiating based on our student needs. So, that's work with our administrative team, that's work with our teachers, and we can see that gap, you can see in the data here, closing as we move forward. Next slide is math now, so, grade three. And again, we see those similar disparities, similar differences. Next slide. And as they get older, you can see them close a little bit. Next slide. We should be at grade five, yep, grade five. And then, these last four slides, I'm going to apologize to you, anyone sitting out there, hit the next slide, please, Mr. Tags. I broke it out, really, really deeply, okay? This is, the next two slides are broken out by subgroup race. We do it in elementary grade bands, so elementary, middle school, high school, and then it's aggregated with all of our grades, and it breaks it out by each level, so we can identify, is there a specific race? Then, Mr. Tags, if you want to go two slides forward, the next one is gender, is there a specific gender, male, female? Or is there a specific, then the last two are programs. Are there specific programs that we have areas in which we need to focus? So, one area I can tell you that we have been focusing, you hear us talk about our curriculum all the time, is specifically with our ELLs, English language learners. It's a growing population, we allocate a lot of resources toward that program, and you can see, the reason why is, we have to target certain areas to support those students. So, this is our total breakdown. You want to go to the last slide, Mr. Tags, for me? The one with all the words? There we go, thank you. So, what are, what are some of the things we do, and then I'm going to throw this over to Mr. Maraldo to dig into the AP scores. The other thing you've heard us talk about a tremendous amount is our multi-tier system of support. So, that is, district-wide, you maybe have heard the term RTI, Response Intervention, at the middle At the middle school, we call it MTSS. The high school is MTSS. We are going through an overhaul of that process, and that process is designed to identify 15% and 5%. So we have a pyramid. You have 80% at the bottom. That is the majority of students. That's anybody that's struggling, going through the normal kind of learning process. We support them in the classroom with differentiated instruction and some additional strategies if needed. The next 15% and then the top 5% are where we kick in basic skills, reading specialists, push in title assistance, that's new at the high school this year. We saw those postings in the summer. We have the math assistance program, the language assistance program at the middle school. That's where some of those deeper interventions would be implemented. We're working with a national research company to overhaul our process, and we actually were joint partners with the state, they were onsite last week with us, to integrate another process that we're required to utilize, which is called Intervention in Referral Services, merge our two processes together. And I think what we're going to end up with within the next year or two is probably a model MTSS Intervention Referral Services program in the state, because where we were 15 years ago with INRS and where we're going with MTSS is probably one of the most impactful process changes we've had since 20 years ago when we talked about differentiated instruction. This change will impact our instruction in the classroom, the expectations for differentiation, and how we help our students in the classroom, but it will also prioritize any of our specialists in supporting specific groups of students with goals. It's easy to say someone, anyone, any one of us, when we're learning, could use extra help, a little extra tutor, a little extra one-on-one time. But when we're looking at specific needs for students, we have to focus and prioritize, set goals, and move students along, and that's what we're redoing. That's what we're revising our process to do. So when we see these gaps close in our data, which is impressive, I would expect when these processes are, and it's evolving, every day it changes, they're onsite with us multiple times, just about monthly right now, engaging with our staff and our teams, our RTI teams and MTS teams. When these processes are fully implemented and we bring on the resources, because we have budgeted money right now, that if, if we need to tweak what our tools are that we have in our toolkit, we have the ability to do that. When all those things are in place, I think we, we will see even more impressive closing of the gap and, and changes. Some other things we have here that we do in terms of interventions. I mentioned those title funds. You could see the title fund, the fruits of the labor of the title fund usage in some of the fifth-grade data as the students move through. But this year, we had, I know one of our elementary schools had a preschool, I think it was called a boost program, where they had students come in before school started to kind of give them a jumpstart. The high school's been doing that and using title funds. We focused, we worked them to focus on a specific targeted group of students this summer for that. Another, one of our elementary schools is going to do a math boot camp through the school, in the school year, so they're in the process of identifying. So you're going to see in the board agenda, you're going to see postings and approvals for these title positions, and that's all in, and it's not to improve this test data. We're not doing this to make this data move. We're doing it to improve the opportunities for our students. The outcome is we see some, some data change, movement in this data, but in reality, we're closing the, the learning gaps that naturally exist. One thing I'll make a comment on, then I'm going to kick it over to you, Mr. Maralda, for AP scores. MAP growth. We've talked about MAP. It's a, it's a budget allocation we have. That is our, for, for the most part now, it's three times a year. Some, some areas, we do give it two times a year. When we get this data, it's months old, and it's stale, I would call it, right? So we can use this as a big overarching kind of look at what we're teaching curricular-wise. It gives us some reports that rate questions from hardest to easiest, and we can make sure, based on that, that our curriculum's in sync. If we're off a little bit, we can look at the timing of when we teach things and things. But with MAP growth, we give it two to three times a year. Students take a test that adapts to what they get right and wrong, identifies what their zone of proximal development is, what they're ready to learn. The next time they take it, they start where they left off, and they move forward, or they move back, right? And the teachers can use that data to create groups, to differentiate instruction, and that happens, again, two to three times a year, and the day after they give the test is when they have that information, unlike six months later when they get this, right? So when we talk about, this is, this is almost like the, I don't know, the autopsy, right? They post look at things, and it, as opposed to MAP growth is real-time, right? MAP growth is stepping on the scale once a week and monitoring your weight, right? MAP growth is looking at the data in real-time and making adjustments. This is a reflection on what was going on, a broad alignment of things. Again, it's one data point that we have. Makes sense?
I have a question.
Sure. And then I'm going to kick it to Mr. Maralda.
I just was wondering, with the COVID gap that we've had with our students over those couple of years where they were home most of the time, is this helping to close up that COVID gap for the students?
So our data now is consistent to what it was pri, pre-COVID. So, and I've set along, and we use the MAP data to track that, because again, this data, there's a gap in it, because we didn't actually, they didn't give it, we didn't give the test, this test. And before COVID, it was a different test, right? So the MAP data, we, we skipped one admin, test administration. We skipped that spring. We then worked with MAP to create a procedure to continue to give it. So individual student, and the reason we don't show the MAP data up here is because it's individual student data. So if you go to a parent-teacher conference specifically at the elementary level right now, they oftentimes share your MAP, the MAP score, the growth, the percentage, this is the national percentage you're in. We can, and we can, we have line graphs for every student, and the students that are in seventh, eighth grade, and ninth grade, they've been taking it since we, we adopted it. So they have extensive multi-year graphs of their growth. And you see little dips here and there, but consistently, even through the pandemic, we saw stable and growth, and growth in some areas. Some of our students love to be home, right? I think our biggest area for growth in terms of recovering from the pandemic, right? Recovering from the pandemic, is probably on the social-emotional side of things, right? Getting students, well, we see sometimes in the HIV reports, we get things like that, getting students to practice interacting with each other, having cordial conversations and that social interaction piece.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sure. So I actually, to piggyback off of that, I know the MAPs are individualized and more real-time, because I found it really interesting how they improve, which is a testament to, you know, our teachers. Is there anything from an earlier age, like I know COGAT is, is first grade, I believe, is that something where we can examine, you know, they're still there for a year or two when they're in first grade, but sort of where they come in, and then how, as an overall school district, we are?
So we give MAP, we, we use elements of the MAP assessment beginning in kindergarten, and we do different pieces of it. And it, again, it looks different. They may do an audio version of it, and it's more of a listening piece before their readers, and then the transition into reading, so we get reading levels off of it and things. So MAP is our real, kind of our foundation piece. It's our universal screener, is what we call it. When we talk about MTSS, the MAP is a universal screener, and then we pull in everything else, right? So this, they, they could be advanced proficient in something here, but if their data everywhere else shows something different, again, this is one data point.
Okay. And then just the title funds, is that something that is in addition to state, A, that we might be eligible for, for additional funding from the state?
Title funds are given based off of a, of, of enrollment, it's related to free and, free and reduced lunch, and although we get a consistent amount each year, we don't bank on actually having any title funds every year. We, we get that allocation usually in May. If we're lucky, it's a smidge earlier, and that's, that's what we use to plan and do some of these interventions. They've never not provided us with the title funding, but they have changed and added schools. So until two years ago, Brookside was not a title school. They are this year, and they were last year. So, which is great, because they're one of the schools that's going to do one of those math kind of boost programs and things.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a, a report or some sort of graphic that you can show us for MAP scores across the district? Is there any type of, so on a, on say, like, seventh grade, seventh grade math scores on the MAP, is there a way to look at where the students are performing, where they might, might not be, and where maybe the curriculum would need to be looked at, changed?
Yeah, what I can do is I can bring, so I'll bring to curriculum, so we have, and actually have them up here.
And I just used, I just picked any grade.
Yeah, we have statement, evidence statement analyses from here, and that's what we use to kind of do a curriculum analysis, because they'll break down any questions asked by standard. And then those standards are then on a bar graph with state performance as well as our performance, and we can see where, so the easiest way to think of it is if we gave, we spent a lot of time on, say, a measurement unit after the NJSLA. Now, we look at this, and our measurement standards are below where they should be, we would take a look and say, we need to re-time it and bring it earlier in the school year, or cycle it through as a review or something like that. And then I can dig into the MAP piece and, and see what district kind of relevant reports it would be. We specifically use it for individual student piece, and a teacher will, will group their students based on what they're ready to learn, so they have like a class report, so they can literally print it out, and they'll have by standard what, you know, what students are ready to learn and things. And some, like in the fall, they'll even get reports on topics that they're not covering till the spring. So they're like, of course, they don't know this, because we're not even going to talk about it till the spring, but these are things that they learned at the end of last year, so we need to kind of cycle back and review. But I can dig in to see what we have in terms of a district piece, because growth is really, this is a snapshot, growth is what we really want to look at, because even if you get 100%, not that they, this is ever in the percentages piece or whatever, but if you get 100% every year on NJSLA from grades three to seven in math, my question is, awesome, but if you know all that already, what are we doing to help you grow in the classroom? And that's why MAP growth is important, because MAP growth doesn't stop, right? This stops at the grade level that you were assessing. MAP growth will project and identify what they're ready to learn.
Right.
So that's, and that's why, to me, this is one data point. There's so much more, like, it makes me ask questions as opposed to make conclusions on, on this specific data set. So, all right, Mr. Maralda, will you take us through the AP scores? This is probably the longest Assistant Superintendent's report in the history of Assistant Superintendent's reports.
And we thank you for a very detailed assessment of our scores. This is exactly what I think the public and the board appreciate seeing and focusing on our student achievement.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Good evening, Mrs. Kirby, Dr. Chandler. Welcome, Mr. Gorham. So I'll close out this portion of the, of Dr. Lehman's report with an overview of our AP performance, our Advanced Placement Programmatic Performance at the Monroe Township High School during the 2022, 2023 school years. The testing data that we receive from the College Board usually arrives sometime around the Fourth of July holiday, which gives us, as an administrative team, a nice opportunity to dig into the data and then disaggregate it, take a look at it, and then turn over some of the feedback and instructional planning reports, which our teachers have access to, which they can then turn into their planning for subsequent years. So as you can see on the screen here, these are currently the AP programs that are being offered by the Monroe Township High School. And as a, as a standard, we encourage all of our students that enroll in our Advanced Placement classes to take the AP examination. You know, these classes are designed for our students that are looking for a collegiate-style experience in a high school setting, and to get a taste of a particular content area in hopes to help that kind of feed their decision-making as they prepare for college acceptance. In some instances, when they achieve a certain score, as you may know, certain colleges will accept that AP performance as equivalency credit in their respective universities. And that will change from institution to institution, but generally, the standard is that we would like all our students that participate in the class to take that exam, so they at least have the option if their school of choice accepts the AP credit. So you can see the Monroe Township High School is very proud that we offer a wide, diverse range of AP offerings in pretty much every content area. And what's nice about the way that our curriculum team, our supervisors handle it in Monroe, is that all of these AP courses here on this screen are aligned to an existing curricular program that does not have an AP affiliation. So in some cases, schools will crowbar AP classes into an existing program of study just to load the courses in there to give the kids the opportunity. What's nice about the way that we do it here in Monroe is it, is a responsible build-out of an existing class, and it aligns with programs that we already have, so there's continuity of instruction, and there's common terminology being used across vertically and horizontally in each respective department. So like Dr. Lehman stated, this presentation will be available online, there's a lot of numbers, but we'll just try to give you some of the highlights from each respective content So just some big-picture numbers here. Last year, we had just a tick under 1,500 exams completed. When you think about our student population at the high school being hanging right around 2,000, that's a pretty impressive number. And more importantly, 84% of the examines earned a qualifying score, which is an exceptionally high number, particularly when you compare it to our peers globally. And of those qualifying scores, which is constituted by the College Board as a score of three or higher, 60% of our examines earned a score of four or five, which is considered an exceptionally high score. Five is the highest possible score that you can receive on an AP examination. So what we did is we broke it down by department categorically, and any, in any instance, when we had data submissions less than 10, and in order to protect the, the student identification, we just used the, the tag of less than 10. So in the column that says percent qualified, that indicates the number of stu, percentage of our students that earned a three or higher. In the parentheses, that would be the global average, and the bigger number there would be the Monroe average. So for example, as you can see in biology, and we'll point that one out, because it's a very impressive return, 85% of the Monroe Township High School students that took the exam qualified, whereas globally, only 64% of the examines qualified. So that's a pretty, you get a pretty good idea about how Monroe Township High School compares to our peers, not just locally, but throughout the globe as the AP exam is offered internationally. Couple other things you'd like to note at is the number of exams that are taken in particular areas. Obviously, our students are very interested in the sciences, and we're also, I'm sure Ms. Druss is very proud to announce that when you look at Physics C, one of the more rigorous exams that can be taken here at the high school, you can see that our students do exceptionally well with a 94 and 100% qualification score respectively. So that is a particularly exceptional return there in the sciences. Math habitually does extremely well. Our, our math students here at the Advanced Placement level, as you can see, particularly in our calculus programs, we absolutely are doing a fantastic job, and our computer science scores continue to climb. And again, what's important to notice is that these score, these, these qualifying percentages, when compared to our peers, are, are notable because of the sheer volume of exams that we are taking. So we're, we're talking about a 96% qualification rate over 105 exams taken. So when you think about that, that efficacy of instruction and test performance, that is, that is something to be noted. And then when you look at the 88% of students receiving fours or fives, that is something special. Another one to take note of would be your English language and composition. When you look at 106 total exams, and 92% of those examines are earning that qualifying score, that is very impressive. Earlier tonight, one of our residents referenced the AP Capstone Program, which is a new program offered at the Monroe Township High School. It's really a two-year program. Ms. Weiss was explaining to me in more detail earlier tonight. And what, so as this particular program grows, this is the really, first full year, last year, I should say, when we really had an opportunity to take a look about how the program's performing, and we're very pleased with the results, and this is one of our programs that is going to be growing, we suspect, over the next couple of years. Anytime you can get a score like that in a new program is always really, we can appreciate that, I'm sure you could imagine. And then this is the last slide, our Social Studies and Business. Obviously, again, staying true to the theme, our students are outperforming pretty much everyone throughout the globe. And then on business, if you take a look at this, very impressive numbers, particularly macroeconomics, when you have 113 exams, 97% pass rate, and 83% fours or fives, that is incredible. And you look at there, 66 students received a five on that exam, so we couldn't be more pleased with the way things are going in the business programs. So don't take my word for it. Next slide, please. So recently, this is, this is as recently as October 3rd, I believe, we received this information, so the Monroe Township High School, Dr. Higgins shared this with Dr. Lehman. The Monroe Township High School is recognized by the AP Honorable as a bronze, as a recipient. Now, no one gets overly excited. Now, no one gets overly excited about a bronze medal, I understand that. But I think the context of the, this evaluation is important. So it's hard to read, but there's three areas in which the College Board will assess the performance of our high school. College culture, which is where we rated bronze, and then the other two categories, college credit and college optimization, we received gold ratings. Now, if you can read that fine print there, you can see that the college culture really reflects the number of students in your school proportional to your population of who actually take an AP exam. So basically, it's how many, can students access AP exams? And one of the things that, under Dr. Chanley's administration, most recently, that we've been trying to do is provide additional programmatic access to students that want to take classes in the APs, whether or not that lines up with their personal career goals or not. And I can think of off the top of my head, six additional sections that we launched this year in business, computer science, and in the AP Capstone Program, which is an immediate remedy to this bronze rating, because I don't think we want to be satisfied with the bronze, we want more. So we expect and we anticipate this, these ratings to continue to climb over the next couple of years and we hope we cannot, that momentum does not slow down. So every time you add an AP section, just keep in mind, that's another teacher that has to join the mix, training and the teachers. As you can see, as our AP program gets larger, our scores are increasing at an increasing rate, which is a formula that we like to see in that program. And these are our college-bound students, understanding that's just a portion of our students. But when you look at the volume of students that are engaging in this exam and taking it and earning the opportunity to leverage that into a potential college credit, I think we could feel really pleased about the way things are going in this particular program. We try to provide as much access to as many students as possible. And it's also important to understand that the College Board does revise their exams every so often. So that poses some incredible challenges to our teachers and our curriculum supervisors. So it should not be lost on anyone in this community, how difficult that can be. And as you know, our class sizes are high and that doesn't slow down our progress. So congratulations to those teachers and obviously the high school administration and the curriculum supervisors for another outstanding production of AP data. And that concludes this portion. Thank you.
So just to reiterate, we think that bronze rating is a function of there's more students that want to take courses than we were able to schedule. Because that, that's a function, that, that is a function of how many students were able to take one class, one AP class in their four years. We know we've had classes that are high interest, that we couldn't schedule everyone who wanted to take it. Specifically, you know, we added multiple sections of computer science this past year. And again, it's acquiring the staff to be able to expand those opportunities. So, you know, we think, you know, we think we're growing and we think our opportunities and AP opportunities will continue to grow as well. So, and that concludes my report.
And I just want to make a comment on that. And you bring up the opportunities of the students to take that. And I think that's a really important thing to discuss because I know that it has been a big topic of discussion in Ms. Belko's Committee on Curriculum. And it was one of the precipituses for us looking at the graduation requirements and changing that and allowing our students the opportunity to take more of these advanced level courses. And that was something that I think that was misrepresented by some members of our community that saw that as us dumbing down, I think it was called, our education, where in fact, what we're doing is we're opening up the opportunities for our students to take higher level courses and to schedule more AP courses that they're interested in rather than taking requirements that are not required by the state of New Jersey before graduation. So I think that's a really important piece of information to think about as well. And looking at that last slide with the little asterisks, it gave things that the district can do to move toward the gold or the silver, I think it was. And it, one of the things was, I think if I remember correctly what it said, it said having 50% of your students have at least one AP course before graduating. And I think that is something great to look at achieving as a district, is allowing the students the opportunities to be able to take those courses before graduating. So I think this is great information that we have. And I think that it shows that what we are doing here through our committees and collaborating the board with the administration is pushing forward our students to achieve the best success that they can. So thank you for that report, I appreciate it.
Ms. Kirby, can I just ask one question about AP?
Sure.
So I don't know if you want, or Mr. Maralda, I'll ask you. If students are unable to, you know, even currently put an AP course in their schedule, maybe they're taking one of the, like the partnership classes with the county college or something like that, are they still able to take the AP exam? Like for someone who maybe is taking a lot of math and science classes, but also knows a lot about music theory and wants to take that AP exam, is that something that they're allowed to do?
So the, the data that we showed includes students who, what we call self-study. So we do have a threshold of criteria or a threshold of things that students need to do in order to take a test, take, sit for the AP exam. So we wouldn't want a student that had no biology background to sit for a biology exam, right? So there is some background expectation. So they must be currently enrolled in an AP class at the high school of some sort and then they can sit for a different one. They must meet the prerequisites for the course, right? So you have to have met the criteria to take the course that you wanted to take. And then you must meet the grade requirement for the corresponding AP course as well. So if it's something that's in the 11th and 12th grade track, you have to be in 11th and 12th grade to do it. But we, we want to provide that opportunity for students to be able to sit for an exam. But we also have to have some level of criteria slash expectations so we, we can ensure that they're prepared through the meeting the prerequisites and being the right age and things to take that exam.
Okay, and then just to piggyback that, anyone who does take the AP course, are they obligated to take the exam or do they have to get to a certain threshold or anything like that?
They can sit for the exam. We encourage students to sit for the exam for the experience. We would never tell and try and filter students out to boost scores or anything like that. The students are taking this course because they want a college experience. Part of that experience is sitting for a collegiate level exam. So we would encourage them to do that, even if they feel like they might struggle to do that and, you know, they get a one or a two, then that's fine. Their experience was sitting for the exam. Of course, we want them to do their best and, and be comfortable. But we would never filter, never, we're not requiring them to take an exam, nor would we convince them, steer them not to do it as well.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay. And does that conclude your report, Dr. Lehman? Yes, okay. The next item on our agenda is our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Chanley.
Good evening, everyone. I hope this evening finds you safe and happy as much as we can be in the trying times of what's going on in the world. So we like to concentrate on some of the positive things that are going on here in our very own bubble, if we may. That being said, October was a very busy month and there was a lot of activities and our board representatives, our student board representatives did a beautiful job. I really could learn from them. They did a fantastic job in expressing what was going on in all the schools. Some of the things that I would like to draw attention to begin with our football games. So we had two major games, we had many games, we had two major games. One was our homecoming game, which I thought was fantastic because it allowed an opportunity, not just for our football players, but for our cheerleading squad, which did a great job, and for our homecoming court. It's always a wonderful opportunity to see those students that are, that represent the nominations and the overall numbers of, because it's, it's basically, they go through the process of being voted on. So that was, that's also very lovely and we had some nice weather, so we were lucky. We thought it was going to rain, but it wound up being really nice out. Additionally, a week later, we had our Hall of Fame game. I'd like to give a shout out to Dr. Higgins, who is still here, he's in the back. So we had pre-COVID started something with our Hall of Fame recipients and then of course, as we know, and he quotes the pandemic, which I like, I'll use your quotes. And now that we're in as much normalcy as we can be moving forward, we did have a Hall of Fame game. And it would just take me a moment, if I could just have your indulgence, I'd like to just name the individuals that were placed into our Hall of Fame. So we have Donna Cabory, Joseph Alfano, Renee Zizza, our entire GMC Champion Boys Soccer Team, and these are all like classes of 1980, 1986, 1989, 1993. Jared Jimenez, class of 2006, Francis Carr, class of 2007, Nicholas Deeney, class of 2011, and Mr. Greg Barer, for those of you that may have known him, he's a gentleman, gentleman. I am so pleased, he stopped into the office to see Dr. Lehman and myself. He's a wonderful guy. He was our supervisor of athletics for years, he was a baseball coach, and he was inducted for a lifetime service. So I did want to take a moment to give a shout out to those people. It's lovely. And he was at the game, yes. And he, and he was here because now he lives in Delaware. So he came to visit. So we welcomed him. Keeping with the positivity that we experienced, we also had a fantastic women's leadership conference. It was held on a Thursday, it was October 5th, it was the Entrepreneurial and Innovation Association at Monroe Township High School. They hosted this women's leadership conference and under the direction of Ms. Marina Vitalin, this event featured many different speakers from a wide variety of backgrounds. Most impressively, the event was organized and executed by our students. We believe that this was a great accomplishment because when you give children the opportunity to do, they outdo us. They truly are commendable. We want to give a special congratulations to Ms. Vitalin and her students. A thank you to all the presenters. I'd like to also mention that it was very exciting that we had an opportunity to have Jamesburg join us. One of the things that everybody knows since I became acting is I'm very passionate about bringing our Falcons into the nest sooner than they get to our nest, which is ninth grade. So we try at every opportunity to include them when possible and we've included them at very middle, a lot of middle school activities. So they were able to come over, their supervisor did join us. Additionally, we had some middle school students, it was open to all the middle school students and we were able to bring over approximately 30 to 35 children, I think, for this presentation. I know it's a very difficult time during the day, board members, of course, are always invited. We were fortunate that our board president was able to join us. Once again, if you're able to come, we think that's great. A lot of times you can't, you have to be at work. So I try and put in my confidential in advance, any opportunities for everyone to come on out because it was, it was really absolutely excellent. I'd like to also make some comments on our work-based learning, learning program. So our high school's work-based learning program, which was formerly referred to as Senior Options, is now in its first full year since its reformation. So there were a lot of changes made. This year, we have added six new school-based internship programs across multiple content areas. Additionally, we have increased student participation in all of our programs category or areas. The work-based learning program helps all type of learners find professional learning opportunities for college placement, regardless of their personal goals after high school, as well as in the work field and the workforce, because it's not just about college, it's also about having children achieve their goals, if it might be in the workforce and not in the college area. Special thank you to Ms. Deanna Dale for leading this program's overhaul and continuing to find more opportunities for our students. You could visit our high school's website for more information about the work-based learning program. Sort of in that area as well, we have, as, as you may or may not know, depending upon if you watch the meetings, if you watch the meetings, we have instituted for the first time ever in Monroe Township history, our alternate pathways to physical education. A lot of times, it was called an Option Two program. I know it's something that my children had an opportunity to do in times where it had been years ago. And this alternative pathways is something that many, many children are participating in. And it's very exciting because it does a couple of things. Number one, it gives the students an opportunity to leave for work-based programs. It gives the students an opportunity to leave, to utilize the time for studying and getting a jump start because they're involved in many sports programs, whether it be inside or outside, meaning part of our sports programs, or if they go to a gym and there's an entire process to make sure that the checks and balances are there. And it also is helping with our facilities. We want children in our buildings, absolutely. But if we have an opportunity for the children to leave the building and then open up space for additional classes like we did do this year, for the needs of the children, it's a really fantastic opportunity. So that has been going extremely well, so I wanted to give a shout out to that. Okay, before I go to my board report, we, I would be remiss, this was something that occurred over the summer and as you know, we didn't have our September meeting. So I wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Misty Drake, Misty Drake, who started with us from Woodland. She was a teacher, I believe, under Dr. Lehman, and then she was a teacher under me at the middle school. And she's just great and she's just full of vim and vigor. If you ever met her, you can't forget her. And I was very impressed that she was nominated for the American Heart Challenge Coordinator of the Year Award. It is a very big deal. Yes, please. She does everything from Mama Mayor for breast cancer awareness, she does hoops for hearts, she's in charge of having the children that run in the, I'm trying to think, what is the actual title, because they run, the torch run. Our children run the torch run and that is a, that is a collaborative, collaborative activity what we do with the Monroe Township Police Department. She just so, just does so much and I wanted to be able to give a shout out to her. Additionally, something that's been very positive and it has to do with, we say, you can judge a book by its cover because we really need to make, make sure things are safe and clean and ready to show our spirit. So under the direction of our new Director of Athletics, who's also here in the back, as well as one of our athletic managers, we started really taking a look at the field house, we started taking a look specifically at the locker rooms, the restrooms, what needs to be painted, what needs to be fixed, signage, you know, through, from a standard of health and safety. Our nurses play a major role in that as well. You know, putting up those signs about MRSA, remember we used to have those, you know, before there was COVID, there was MRSA, wash your hands, this is how you wash your hands, this is what it looks like. Putting in the automatic systems where we had the antibacterial gel. So they really spearheaded it, these gentlemen spearheaded it, but it would not have been done without the workers. And I would like to give a shout out to those individuals. There are seven names that were given to me. I want to acknowledge them, they worked very hard in our maintenance and buildings and grounds department. They should never be overlooked, just like we talk about our secretaries and, and you know, our paras and lunch, nurses, everybody. So I'm going to do my very best to say the names and I apologize for anybody that watches this or is here tonight. So the first person I'm going to do his short name is Ziggy Kusiel. The next one is Les, Les Loa Lenzik. The next gentleman is Lech Masklowitz, Danny El Sahili, Salvatore Alcaro, David Thiessen, and Jason Miller. They went above and beyond to paint and clean and really make it a wonderful place for our athletes. And last but never least, especially when I like to use my comments about flying out of the nest, we have three, we have three individuals who are leaving us for retirement. So after 32 years, our lead custodian at Oak Tree School, we have Lucy Main, 32 years, that's really an accomplishment. Robert Klepakki, who's one of our maintenance mechanics, who's been all over the district, currently at the middle school, 21 years of service. And Olga DeGracia, 26 years as a teacher of basic skills in the district. So as we continue to see with all the positive things that are going on, a wonderful shout out to Dr. Lehman and Mr. Maralda, great presentation as well on the sports. Excuse me, did you see that, I got sports. Talk about sports. The sports are doing great also, they're doing fantastic. On our, on our academics, it's so important, and I'm glad I brought up sports because it really, it truly is about, is about the whole child and every area in which they can excel, we want to complement them and we want to make it a better opportunity for them in all areas. On that note, we go down to the business in hand and I will be representing the business office as well after I'm done with the Superintendent's area. So if I may, under personnel for a 10-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through AN.
Motion.
Got a motion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay.
It was a motion by Mr. Tofano, seconded by Ms. Fabiano. Yes, any questions?
Yes. Item S should be tabled out till after the second closed session. Uh, right here, 10 out of 39. I saw the.
Item S?
Item S. Letter S. Yeah, we haven't.
We need to speak about a closed session.
Okay.
Okay. Do I need to remove that?
Yeah, just remove that from your, it was a motion and a second, right?
I didn't make a motion yet. Do I have to make a motion to table?
No, no, hang on a second. There was a motion and a second.
Correct.
Yes.
So if the mover and the second are agree to withdraw that as a friendly amendment.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'll withdraw.
Okay. Do I need to repeat it again over there?
No.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, are there any other questions?
So we're doing the roll excluding S.
Excluding S. Yes. Yep. All right.
I just had a quick question about enrollment. Because I know, like, I had brought this up, I think sometime last year, but I'm seeing the numbers that are continuing to go down at Oak Tree. So like in just September of 2021, or we didn't go 2020, there were 768 students, 2021, 709, 2022, 643, and now in 2023, there's 590.
Correct.
So it looks like there's this.[1772.92]
Yes.
I was just curious, is there like a continuous progression? Is this because of, I mean, obviously, the students are getting older. Do we know if this is something that's going to continue on that trend?
All we can do is, and we actually have been doing this because we've been having conversations, Dr. Lehman, myself, and Mr. Marada has also been involved. We're having conversations with the principals about what the sections will look like and what that means as far as employment, how many staff members and what our needs are in the buildings. So all we can do is, of course, we always have the demographers report, which is, you know, because originally, the original study way back when was the tenure, and then we had another demographers report that came out when we went forward with a referendum. So currently, the numbers are trending down in certain grades, and we will just be mindful of it when it comes to staffing. But we don't make any predictions regarding what's coming.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, may we have a roll call, please, Ms. Tagliafara?
Okay, Ms. Ratner? Yes, to all. Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It is recommended the board approve the attached personnel items A, O through CR under a nine-member vote.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? May we have a roll call, please, Ms. Tagliafara?
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter CE for Mr. Ratner.
So noted. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under board action items under a ten-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached board action items A through L.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes. Can I just get a little clarification on what U is? Just like a quick. So it's an agreement between
American Research Institute.
And American Institutes for Research. It's an expensive program.
So this, so we're in year, can I respond to that?
Yes.
So we're in year two of our multi-year contract. I actually spoke to the overhaul of our multi-tier system of support. So we're using federal funding that's allocated specifically to address multi-tier systems of support to work with them. They are, in the beginning, it was some virtual training and virtual consultation with some onsite work this year. They're onsite more than they're virtual with us. And they're sitting in, and they're coaching through our RTI MTSS meetings. They're working with us in our interventions to refine our process. And this is a, an adjustment to the payment schedule because the federal funds have to be expended by certain periods of time. And some of these federal funds, they'll use them or lose them. So we adjusted the payment schedule so we could allocate funds from this account that's dedicated to this so we don't lose the funds. So that's really what the adjustment is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes, Ms. Bora?
I know I went back and forth with Doc and Dr. Lehman, but I did not, I don't think we closed the loop. So Doc Lehman, you're saying the payment schedule is the only adjustment in this. We're not, we didn't change the amount. We just changed the way we will pay them for the second year.
So there was a slight adjustment in the amount paid because of the, because of the user, yeah, because of user-lose on this allocation. We were bringing him in one more onsite visit.
But it's still all federally funded.
All federal funded, though.
The taxpayers are not paying for it.
Yep, this is all federal funded.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, may we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Tagliafara?
Mrs. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, abstain on letter E.
So noted. Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter B for professional development for Mr. Snyder. I need to recuse on a trip, and it's not online. I don't, I think it must have came off for some reason. And I don't know if it's ten-member or nine-member. I think it's nine. So whichever one it's on, I would recuse for the field trip with Mr. Ratner.
Field trip with Ratner, sure. So noted. Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under board action items under a nine-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached board action items X through AG.
Motion.
Got a motion?
Motion seconded by Ms. Belko. Any questions?
All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on B and C on the bill list for both, for September twentieth and October eighteenth bill list for Mr. Snyder for reimbursement, as well as bill list item five, seven, one, four, zero. Abstain, I mean.
Everything else is just. So noted. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
So.
No, that's okay. I was going to say our next item on the agenda is our Business Administrators' Report. And Dr. Chanley will be doing that this evening as Ms. Allen is not here.
Okay. Also, I'd like to let the public know, and of course, the board members know that we are continuing, we did start earlier. That was something that was described in one of the finance committee meetings. You're welcome to go and watch it. We started the process earlier of how we go through our budget defense rounds, where it starts and where it ends. So where it starts is, Dr. Lehman has conversations with the individual supervisors of the areas. And then they go ahead and have preliminary conversations, the wants, needs, the must haves, God bless you. And then they move forward, and that is still continuing. Ms. Allen then continues with what she is able to work with, what information she does have to build the budget. So that's something she's continued to work with. And then we have final budget defense rounds with myself and Ms. Allen and Dr. Lehman as well. And that will happen the beginning of November. We moved the process up a little bit because we wanted to be in the best possible way we can if we had any questions and any areas of need and, you know, regarding what our needs are. So I just wanted to give an overview of that even though Ms. Allen is not here this evening. And on that note, I'm going to continue with her recommendations. Under a ten-member vote for board action, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the following board action items by roll call, board action items A through P.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? All right, seeing that, may we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Tagliafara?
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, I was busy looking for that field trip when I did the bill list, so it should be in this. So yes, recuse on B and C for the bill list and for that check that was mentioned earlier.
So noted. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
And Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And finally, under board action items nine-member vote, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the following board action items by roll call, Q through S.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes the board. Business administrator. I was going to say, what's happening? Business administrator, I'm not sure who I am tonight. Business administrator's report and wishing everybody once again health, happiness, and peace for the rest of the month.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Board President's Report. I just want to start off by saying a very heartfelt congratulations to Dr. Chanley for conferring her doctorate degree. I know that there has been a lot. There has been a lot of talk and speculation as to whether she was actually moving forward with her doctorate degree, although she has always said she has. And this board was advised by Dr. Chanley the day that she did get the certification from the university where she got her doctorate, that yes, she did indeed receive it. And we do have the documentation for that. And we, we wish you much congratulations. And congratulations. You're welcome. Next week is the New Jersey School Board's Annual Workshop in Atlantic City. I know I am attending, as well as I think Mr. Payne is registered, and Ms. Ratner. And we have members of, and Ms. Bora. And we have members of the administration going this year as well. I've gone through the agenda and started to select the sessions I plan to attend. And I know the Commission of Education will be there again this year giving a keynote speech. Last year, I got the pleasure of meeting her after that and having a brief conversation with her about Monroe Township. And hopefully, this year, we have the opportunity to speak with her again. It's a great event that allows board members, administration, service providers, and state officials to come together to discuss the real topics in education to help districts make the best possible educational experience for all students. I am looking forward to this, and I do plan to bring back information to the board upon my return and anybody else that is going as well. You know, whatever sessions that you attend, you know, to come back and you can report back to the, to fellow board members and the public of what we, what we learned there and any information we could bring back. I know last year, I attended one of the sessions with Ms. Chanley on security. And we did bring back the information here to the district. And I know there were several things that she spoke to our Director of Security about, and they implemented. I won't discuss what they were because we don't usually discuss the security. But it is a great opportunity for the administration and board members to go down and speak with other board members and administrators and officials as well. So that concludes my report. The next item on the agenda is other Board of Education business. Does anybody have any business to bring before the board? Ms. Ratner?
Okay, so first of all, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Goram on your appointment. My kids are just entering middle school now, but I've heard good things from you about a teacher or as a teacher. And I also just wanted to thank all of the other individuals who put their names in for the position as well. And I hope that you will all continue to be active members and continue to make our school great. I did have the opportunity to attend a few of our district events. It's always great to see the students succeeding. Reminds me why we're doing what we're doing. I did watch one of our volleyball games with our middle school girls. They can really serve. It's pretty impressive. And I also was able to attend the second half of the high school marching band home competition. My four-year-old was like this because it was in the gym the whole time. In fact, my six-year-old started to do it too, and he's usually okay. Um, in fact, my six-year-old started to do it too, and he's usually okay. But, um, it was really great to just see like hundreds of these musicians, um, all in one place, watch the camaraderie between them. My daughter's potentially eligible for marching band next year, which is insane to me. Um, you know, it almost made me want to pick up my trombone again. But, um, it was definitely a great experience. Um, let's see. I also just wanted to share a little bit from the legislative committee meeting that I attended on the 14th. Um, and I did get, this is just the printed out documentation, and then they also sent us a bunch, so I'm definitely not going to read it all. I just wanted to share a few of the highlights. And then if there's any board members who want this information, feel free to reach out, and I'm glad to share it. Um, but they went over some of the highlights for this year's budget. Um, they mentioned that preschool aid is increasing by a hundred and nine million dollars, um, and forty million dollars is for new districts. Now, I did actually ask, they're going to get sick of me asking questions too, but I did ask if this is something where for the expansion, it might include infrastructure. Um, and they said that they did not believe so, um, but that they would look into it and confirm and get back for the December meeting. Um, they are waiving the teacher certification fees until June 2024, um, because we know that there have been struggles in recruiting teachers. There are also our grants available, again, for regionalization studies. Um, they had mentioned that there was the first successful regionalization done, I believe it was South Hunterdon. There were a couple of smaller schools, um, that they're now combined into one district. Um, there's five million dollars for, it's called SREP, which is the School Regionalization Efficiency Program, which provides funds for two or more districts to study the benefits of either merging together or utilizing additional shared services. Um, and then there's another one, which is LEAP, which is Local Efficiency Achievement Program, which is more geared towards municipalities, but might be able to assist with just things in the school district as well. Um, and then they also mentioned there's ninety-five million dollars in grants or in budget for capital maintenance and emergent needs. Um, twenty million dollars of that is earmarked for charter schools. Um, this might be something that is inclusive of the ROD grants, or it might be separate. I'm not sure. Um, they also went over just a couple of new education laws. Um, they mentioned that their Medicaid funding for health services, um, is now allowing Medicaid reimbursement for covered behavioral health services provided by local education agencies to eligible students. So initially, this was available exclusively for students with special needs because it was part of their IEP, um, or their 504, but now it's available for other students as well if a need can be demonstrated. Um, and then they also mentioned that there is a social media impact study, um, that was created, which is a commission to study the effects of social media on adolescents. Um, just a couple of other things. There's three million dollars currently, um, there's not three million dollars currently on the governor's desk. There's a bill on the governor's desk, um, which allot three million dollars for educator scholarship programs for students who want to go into teaching. There's also, um, the electric school bus program. I wrote it down. It's A4716 dash S dash three zero four four, which is fifteen million dollars. It can be used for buses and cost to support the bus, used for cost to support the buses. Um, and the grant is actually for one year of a three-year grant, so it's a continuation grant. Um, and then they mentioned briefly that the Anti-Bullying Task Force for the state met on the Fourth and Fifth, um, and that they are still accepting written testimony, which would be kept confidential. Um, and they provided the email address. Um, finally, there was, um, discussion about school meals, which I found kind of interesting because there are a lot of districts which are losing a fair amount of money because they have to cover the losses for a lot of the school meals. Um, one district mentioned that at the elementary school level last year, they lost almost three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so then another district, um, which is actually one of the great things, because you get to hear some of the things happening in our districts, they mentioned that they were utilizing something called feedingarkids.org. Um, and there was a discussion about whether or not it's allowed for districts to solicit donations or things like that to help, uh, cover these things. Um, so I went to look at that website, and it was pretty interesting. They work with certain districts. I don't know if you have to be eligible in a certain way. Um, and then they also did have a discussion about snacks in the cafeteria, which is something that's been near and dear to my heart ever since my daughter bought cookies for her whole class, which I'm sure she appreciates me saying right here on the record. But, um, they did mention that if this is something, there's actually, you're allowed to pass a policy that can limit snacks for students, which I didn't realize was something that's possible. Whether or not something anyone would even want to do, I don't know, because I'm not sure if you want to have that oversight. But I did find it interesting because I know now even with my son, who we have to like just one ice cream, not an ice cream and a cookie and this and that. Um, so I found it interesting to hear that other districts were talking about those same issues. Um, so that was just a highlight. It was really amazing to be there. We also discussed our advocacy plan, which, you know, of course, I start talking about funding and impact fees, and then I don't stop. But, um, it was really nice to hear some of that. And then if anybody is interested in these documents, just let me know.
Great, thank you. I think what, I just have a question. Did they mention about the, I know you, when you started off, you were talking about the expansion of, um, was it preschool, pre-K? Did they talk about possibly lifting? Because all of the grant money that they have is, um, you have to meet a threshold of ten percent for free and reduced lunch. Are they looking at, um, reducing that and opening that up to more districts that, because we don't currently meet that, so we don't get any grant, we can't get any grant money for that?
Right. Um, so it didn't specifically come up, however, it did come up whether or not there are certain, um, income thresholds, and they mentioned for the money in this budget, they did not believe so. That's when I, because then I'm like, oh, well, maybe we're eligible. Then I'm like, our problem isn't just funding the curriculum and the teachers, it's where are we putting these people if we have it? And then I didn't really look into more once they said infrastructure is not really part of it, because then I'm like, what are we going to do? But at the same time, um, I can certainly ask at December if the threshold for the free and reduced lunch is something that's being considered.
Ms. Alvarez?
Actually, just today on NJ.com, there was an article about the preschool money, and they did mention that twenty-six school districts, if I'm allowed to go on my phone, I can give you the exact names, but it's no longer the ten percent threshold. It was open to anybody to apply for this year, and they granted it to twenty-six additional districts. And it lists all the districts that got additional funding. But it is only, it's not for infrastructure. So I know we had a discussion once, um, with Mr. Tofano's committee, that we need the space. Right? But yes, this year, twenty-six districts, it was no longer that ten percent.
I did just pull it up. Um, so just for Middlesex, the two were Denellen and Highland Park.
Yeah.
Um, and then Monmouth is Oceanport. Um, those are the ones closest to us. I'm not really sure where they stand compared to where we are, but, um, they did receive a decent amount of funding for it.
Okay, maybe we can look into that, Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman? Because I know the last time that we had looked into that, which was last year, it was the ten percent of free and reduced lunch, so.
Pre-K.
For pre-K, yes.
True. I actually brought that up, and then I had all these eyes shocked at me. You don't have full-day kindergarten? And I was like, well, there's like seven other districts in the state that don't either, but I guess they weren't represented, so I was like the lone wolf there. But, um, I said, actually, like, it's hard for us to get full-day preschool, and then be like, sorry, but now you can only come half the time for a year, and then we'll have you back for the full day. So obviously, it'd be great if we can get that going, but again, that goes back to infrastructure, so.
Infrastructure and funding, that we don't, we can't apply for the funding for that either. Okay. Does anybody else have any business before the board?
Other business?
Other business?
New business? I just like to make a couple of comments.
Sure. Ms. Scott?
Um, again, congratulations, Dr. Chanley. So nice to, uh, be able to call you that. Everyone have fun at the board convention. This is my first year that I can't go because I have to go to Atlanta for work. I'm very upset of all the weeks of the year that I can't go. Um, it's a great time. You learn a lot, spend some time on the floor, um, you know, go to all your sessions. It's a great week. Um, and it's also an opportunity, anybody has to do their governance training. Uh, they always have the governance there too, which saves the district money, because we're already paying for the convention, and you don't have to sign up and do it separately to another class, because you can do it free while you're there. It's all part of the, part of the package. Um, I wanted to bring up some comments that were made tonight as to, again, why, uh, they allowed me to vote, and I want to point out some things that in doing some research in history, uh, what my predecessor was allowed to do. Um, Mr. Rutsky, in, from looking at the policies that Monroe has, when the policy that was voted on in 2019, uh, February of 2019 was when it was approved, if you go on the, uh, the website, um, February of 2019, it states that the Jamesburg representative, the representative of the Jamesburg Board of Education is not entitled to vote to fill a vacancy on the Monroe Township Board of Education. This is reaffirmed February 2019. Um, then in March of 2019, a month later, it references in 141.1, it represents, it, uh, details out what the sending district is allowed to do, and in that, it references the statute that I pointed out, the NJSA 18A, colon, thirty-eight dash eight point one, in, um, allowing the rights of the sending district. Um, then I see, as I go through the minutes, that in September of 24 of 2019.
I was there.
Which Ms. Arminio was a board member, Mr. Tofano was a board member, um, they not only, um, allowed him to participate in, my predecessor, Mr. Rutsky, to participate in a vacancy. This was when Mr. Shierella, I guess, had apparently stepped down from the board, and Lou Masters filled his place. Um, but I'm reading the minutes here. They went into closed session, and when they came back from closed session, a motion was made by Mr. Ruski and seconded by Ms. DeMayo that the members of the Board of Education approve the following resolutions to a roll call. And the one under that resolution was that they appoint Mr. Lou Masters to the seat of the vacancy vacated by Mr. Shierella. Um, the roll call was six, one, two. If you add that up, that is nine members of the board, which would be one that would be missing, um, and zero, zero, uh, which the only ones who abstained were Arminio, Lang abstaining, and Mr. Tofano voting no. So that shows you that Mr. Rutsky voted in September of 2019 to fill a vacancy of this board. But now, because there are people of the community that don't like that I get along with the majority of the board members, now they question my right to vote to fill a vacancy. So just pointing out that history. Read it. Do your research.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other business? Ms. Bourne, if you want to say something?
I just have a few comments, Ms. Kirby, if I can.
Sure.
I want to congratulate you for becoming a voting member of the legislative committee, and that's a huge representation for us, so. And I want to congratulate you, Mr. Goram, for joining our vote. And I wanted to just address the transparency accusations that came from the members of the public tonight, um, about the process this board has followed. While I'm not going to be talking to anything that we've done in the closed session, I do want to emphasize the fact that, um, we did everything under legal counsel. There is no process that a board has, there's no outlined process that a board has to follow to fill this position as was guided by our legal counsel. And whatever was done, we ended tonight with a six to one abstain vote. That is a majority, and it shows unity, and if we as a board, um, want to look back at what happened the last time we had to fill a seat, that's when there was lack of transparency, that's when, you know, people, things were done that should not have been done. We have, we were proud, we felt the pride, all of us, to see the number of applications that came, and all of this can be opened. We were able to.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir, you're out of order.
Um, we all reviewed the applications. We all made our own decisions as individual board members, and the way democracy works right now is that the public elects us and trusts us to vote, to represent the public. When we are choosing a board member that is not going through the process of general elections, each one of us is looking at those resumes, as looking at those applications, and making our own decision as to who we think we will be able to work well with for the benefit of our students and our staff and our school district for the next six months. This is just a six-month position. Who, whoever has filled this position, Mr. Goram, is here till April, when the next elections will happen. And that's when the public gets the control back in their hand to elect the candidates that are, whose vacancy is up. So we have not violated democracy, we have not violated transparency, we have done what you have elected us to do, and I hope and, you know, pray that the public will continue to be involved and continue to do criticism, but constructive criticism. Yes, challenge us on transparency and challenge us on processes, but have faith that you put us here, and we are doing due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Belcom?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I just want to point out and put it on the record that as soon as the public forum ended and we got into the meat and potatoes of what we do here in this district, and that is to educate children and to provide social, emotional learning for them, the folks that came up to the podium walked out and left. So that's what I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Belcom. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, the next item on our agenda is a public forum. Anybody wishing to come up and speak, you have four minutes, please state your name and municipality.
Pradeep Mehlam, Monroe Township. Um, so one question to Dr. Chanley. Uh, one of the member, uh, community just texted me that, um, in the today's parent conference meeting in an elementary school, the, in the Study Island section, the reading, the whole reading section was gone. No RAS kits, no Epic, nothing, and the teacher answer is, the district has removed it, and we don't have any alternatives to enhance the reading section.
In the, so at the parent-teacher conferences, one of the teachers mentioned that we no longer have the reading.
Section in the Study Island, which contains RAS kits, Epic, and different reading resources that kids are reviling till today.
Dr. Lehman?
Do you want to go all the questions first? You want me to?
Do you have other questions, Ms. Malam?
Not at this point.
Okay.
So, in our budget process last year, we, we analyzed our utilization of different resources. One of the things that we did not renew is the reading section of Study Island. Um, it was used, uh, in very, very, uh, reduced areas relative to, uh, what we, what it costs us to use. The other two programs are unrelated to Study Island. Study Island is a separate piece. The, if there's any resources that were not continued for this year, it's because they're replaced by our new reading program. So, uh, if that parent or someone has a concern, they can certainly reach out to their building administrator. They'll get them in contact with either Ms. McLeod, Dr. Rozell, and, uh, if we need to, and again, this is the first year that the reading program's being rolled out. If we need to, uh, assist the staff member in terms of being able to direct a parent into where the resources are that, uh, could be utilized, we can certainly do that. But what, what we are focusing on is using the resources that we already have to the fidelity and to the, uh, maximum capacity, as opposed to having a million resources that are barely used. Um, and that's one step we took last year. Um, we're continuing to monitor use on the math side of Study Island as well. Um, that's another, it's another very expensive program, and we, you know, the data we see right now, this is used on the weekends and in the evenings, um, and over the summer, uh, not necessarily instructionally in the classroom, not that we want it to be an instructional tool, but, uh, we will, and we are currently kind of revisiting that with the staff. We will see when it's utilized, and that may be another piece that we'll take a look at, um, in terms of its long-term fidelity, because it's a, it's a significant budgetary number.
What are the alternatives?
What's that?
What is the alternative to reading program in the Study Island?
So the, the alternate is the My View program. It's their online, uh, resources. But again, I would direct that parent directly to the building principal, who can get him in contact with the supervisor, and they can, it depends on the grade level, what the primary has different resources than upper elementary does. If they're, if they have certain programs, we did keep licenses for certain interventions and things like that, so, um, it's just, it's very, it's a very specific question. I would direct them, and anybody who's listening has a question about an available resource, to reach out to their building admin as a starting point, and we'll get you and put you in the right direction.
Okay. Um, another follow-up question to BGNT Committee, that finding the drivers and contacting the fire department was a great idea. Was it followed and yielded any results?
With the, I'm sorry, I, you said with the fire department?
Yeah, with the fire department, the, in BGNT Committee, they was discussed in the September meeting that they are going to reach out to fire department for additional drivers for the school buses, because they are CDL, um, kind of certified.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was with the township.
McDonald's, it's different certifications.
Okay.
So, um, and you are absolutely correct. So Ms. McDonald went ahead and reached out, and the certification is not the same for a, um, employee school bus driver as it is, although we know what they drive, because they're firemen and ambulance drivers, but there are, there are different levels of certification. Since that time, though, we are very happy that we are able to reach out to a company, and, uh, we're very excited that we have a company that's going to be providing us services for after-school, for our sports programs, and, um, that's very exciting, because we're going to have an opportunity to provide more busing and less on the parents.
Okay, thanks. Um, one, one more thing, um, the, the Legislative Action Committee thought about like sending an email, um, campaign to legislators. So, because our town has like, even public has some, uh, few technology working people, so we can help you out, like creating a small URL which embers everything, like people are like clicking on one button, it will open up on their phone like a mail application, whatever the application, like Gmail or Yahoo or whatever the preferred application, and then they can just simply type their name at the bottom and then click on send. So we can help you out setting up like that, because we did for some, uh, NGOs or like nonprofit organizations, so.
Thank you.
We can help you with that one.
Uh-huh.
The final one.
Thank you.
We are discussing, debating about this policy, one, zero, one, three, five, one, one, three, four, so, uh, one, four, three. So again, the point is, the route that taken to interview only few members of the people, the, the paradoxical is something like this. You applied to run for a mayor of this particular town, and then you received a, a call from the township, uh, county clerk, saying that, oh, sorry, we have only three spots in the ballot paper, but there are nine people applied for this, nine people nominated for this position, so we are not considering you, but you can be voted by the people by writing your name in the others board box. I'm concluding my argument with that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Uh, all the following I had intended to ask at your September meeting, so I had to wait until your second session tonight to deal with them. Uh, your agendas for the closed sessions of June 21 and July 19 indicated that you would be conducting an annual evaluation of the superintendent. Policy and Regulation 1240 both indicated that the evaluation procedure is to be finalized by July 1, but that did not occur. Why did you not meet this deadline?
It was finalized, and we did that in accordance with the law.
But, but you didn't, you, you were still discussing her evaluation in your July 19 meeting, because it's in the agenda for your July meeting. So if you were still discussing her evaluation, you had not completed that evaluation by July 1. And I was just wondering, why didn't you complete the evaluation according to what the policy and regulation requires?
The evaluation was completed on time. Mrs. Chanley received her signed copy from myself. She signed it. Do you want to?
Absolutely. Um, it met the correct deadline, it was completed, it was signed, I, I.
And it was submitted to the county.
It's been filed and submitted to the county.
Then why was it part of your closed session for, for July 19? Okay, so I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. Furthermore, the public was never informed that the evaluation had been finalized. So what you're telling me now is that it has been finalized?
Yes, it has been.
Okay. But I, I still do not believe that it was finalized according to your policy. During your July meeting.
What, what you believe and what is fact could be two different things. But, but to stand here and say that it did not happen and we did not do it in the timeframe is incorrect. We did follow the statute, and we did complete it on time, we did deliver it to Mrs. Chanley, we did follow what we were legally required to follow. What you believe is, is your opinion, but that is not the facts of what took place.
I, I know, and sometimes you're also at fault with that, Madam President. But once again, it still begs the question of why you were discussing her evaluation in the closed session of July 19, when it should have been totally finalized by July 1. I'm going to leave it at that, because I have other things to talk about. During your July meeting, I had requested that the public be provided with a presentation of the new contract with the MTEA. Such presentation was not included in your August meeting, it was not in your planned September meeting, and it was not in tonight's meeting. When can the public expect to hear that presentation on the new MTEA contract?
Mr. Poey, I, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking for. If you're asking for a formal presentation, that is, I do not recall a board ever doing that here in Monroe. If you're asking for the finalized contract copy of that, that is still being finalized and has not been completed to date. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure what you are, are looking for. When the contract is finalized and complete, it will be, and what I mean by finalized and complete, the terms of everything is set in stone, that has already been approved by the board and approved by the members of the MTEA. However, it does take time for both the, the union and the board attorney to work through all of the language and make sure that everything is exactly according to what the agreement should be. And I know that we have been going back and forth, and, and we're almost, I believe, at the final stages of having that complete. Once that is complete, that is a public document, and that will be shared with the public.
All right, thank you. I look forward to that. I was troubled during your August meeting, and I address this remark to the entire board, not just to the board president. I was troubled during that meeting when this board approved a teacher who was, who is making this year ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars, he's at the top of the guide, to serve as the Fall Staff Student Athletic Manager at a stipend of five thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, and then an additional teaching assignment of eight thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. Would it not have been better to have appointed teachers who are not at the top of the salary guide for these assignments? It may be legal, but it does have the smell of nepotism about it. And finally, I want to congratulate our girl soccer team. It was mentioned earlier this evening by one of our student reps, uh, but it was mentioned in NJ.com this week that they are now ranked number fifteen in the state. They have only had one tie, and the rest have been wins. They tied with East Brunswick at the beginning of the year. They just beat East Brunswick, and now they go into the Middlesex County Conference Tournament, and I wish them the best. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to address the comment that you made about one of our staff members. We have many, many staff members at the top of the guide, and we have several staff members who receive multiple stipends, um, for various things that they take on above and beyond their job responsibilities. on above and beyond their job responsibilities. And when, first of all, the board does not go out and solicit anybody for any stipend positions or any jobs. They are posted, and all we can do is vote on the recommendations that come before us. And I do believe that the positions that you are mentioning had one applicant. So as to not fill a position, this board did approve the recommendation that came to us, and it was a, a staff member that applied, and there were no other applicants. And Dr. Lehman, I know that fell under your recommendation, so if you would like to add any comment to that.
No, that, that was the only applicant for the position. So that's, that's why we, you know, we solicited, we posted twice, we, the athletic director seeked, seeked other people that had done it before, and for the fall position, that was the only applicant we had.
Thank you. And you can look through the agendas when we have them come out yearly with all the stipend positions. And you can see that there are many staff members that take on various stipend positions. And it has come up in the past as to, you know, why, why would one staff member have multiple stipends? Well, it's either we, we approve the stipends for the staff members that apply, or we don't have an advisor, or we don't have a staff member for that. And then we have to cancel a program, or a club, or, or an item in our district. So we do our due diligence as board members to ensure that we are hiring staff accordingly. And that's all I'll say on that topic. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Yes. Adam Elias, Monroe Township. Sorry, I know you've all been here for about four hours. Need to keep you for four more minutes. In three weeks, we do have an election coming up. And while the, excuse me, I'm just trying to, I'm filling brighter here. While there's no members of the board that are going to be on the ballot this year, and there's no referendum, this town will be electing a mayor, council members, and three members of the state legislature to serve Monroe. Monroe Township is one of eight municipalities in the 14th Legislative District of New Jersey, which also covers Jamesburg, Cranberry, Plainsboro, and Middlesex County, and Hamilton, East Windsor, Robbinsville, and Hightstown, and Mercer County. Since at least 2011, our district has been represented by State Senator Linda Greenstein, and our two assemblymen, Dan Benson and Wayne D'Angelo, both from Hamilton. Monroe Township has not represented by one of its own residents since the recently deceased Peter Garibaldi left office about 35 years ago as both the mayor and the state senator of Monroe Township. This year, Monroe will elect at least one new person to fill the open seat being vacated by Dan Benson. For those that are still paying attention tonight, are still awake, when you cast your votes for the two assembly seats, I ask that you please consider casting one of your two votes for me, the only Monroe resident running for the state legislature. So a little bit about me, my wife Karen and I are both immigrants who both grew up in Middlesex County and moved to Monroe in February 2020, where we raised our three children, Addison, Alina, and Adam Jr. All three of our children will be attending the schools here in Monroe Township District until our son graduates high school with the class of 2040. My parents are retired in one of the Monroe's many 55-plus communities, and my wife's parents also moved to town just a little bit over a year ago on Applegarth Road. I've been an attorney for over 10 years now, and I'm a founding partner of the law firm Elias and Gonzalez, with an office in Perth Amboy and here in Monroe on Forest Gate Drive, where I also moonlight as a mortgage broker. Together with my wife, we own the James Brew Cafe, and just one week ago, we opened our second coffee shop in Hamilton called Hamalate. We are proud to create opportunities in our community, including for our residents with special needs. We live to serve and have been blessed to give back to the community through donations, fundraisers, and sponsorships to various causes and organizations, even with this, this school district here in Monroe. In addition to passing state laws and providing constituent services for residents in their district, legislators are responsible for securing state funds for their constituents to help them with the growing demands of school districts such as Monroe Township. Monroe has experienced rapid growth in the past decade and needs more resources than ever to upgrade existing facilities and offer programs and schools built for 21st century education. As a taxpayer and a parent invested in the future success of our schools, voters can count on me to advocate aggressively for our fair share of state funding, and to communicate and collaborate with local leaders to obtain the best possible outcomes for our students and our teachers. I can promise you, I may not be at every single board meeting, but I will attend at least one board meeting every quarter as both a parent and as a legislator serving Monroe Township. Yes, I am a Republican, but I can assure you, my political affiliation does not define who I am. I am a husband, a father, a son, a small business owner, and proud resident here of Monroe Township. I am not a MAGA extremist, and I am not running for the Assembly to further the interests of the Republican Party. I am running for the state Assembly to serve you and my community, and to make a lasting impact so that our families can all afford to remain in Monroe Township and in New Jersey. I thank you for letting me share my message tonight. I hope I can count on your vote in November, and I hope I'll be able to serve you all in Trenton come in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Yes. I'm Sarah Aziz. I live in Monroe Township. I run the Monroe Township Education Facebook group, and sometimes I get reports from teachers and staff about matters of public concern. And I received some reports lately that I, I, I think should be brought to your attention, and I want to confirm that these are, were accurately brought to the attention of administrators. I want to know what the administration response was. It seems that there's been a great restricted access to Genesis that prevents teachers from getting all the information about students that they used to be able to get. They don't have access to the conduct tab, so they can't see if a student's been written up. This makes it difficult to submit discipline referrals when teachers cannot access student schedules or conduct tabs. Also, you know, not everybody involved in the IEP has access to Genesis, is what I heard. And, you know, this makes it more, it, it, it makes them, it makes them harder to do their job efficiently and effectively. I was told they don't feel trusted or respected, and I was told that this was due to apparently some security breach that occurred some time ago. And my feeling is that there should have been a targeted way to address that without collectively, you know, punishing everybody else. You know, we already have a problem with teacher retention. There's a lot of vacancies. And so I think that, you know, I'm afraid some of these teachers will leave for another district that, that feels empowered by their administration and trusted by their administration. The problem with the Genesis access means that if a special ed teacher is working in a general ed classroom, they can't look up information about the general ed students. If, if a stu, if a teacher's providing after-school help, they can't check the schedule of the, the student that they're helping. Same with coaches. So I wondered if this was, this is, this was brought to the administration's attention, what the response was. I heard the, the music, the chorus room at the high school, the water was pouring in during rainstorms. There was concerns about mold. I was, I was told that teachers wanted a crossing guard on Schoolhouse Road to help students in the morning that are crossing from the tennis courts to the high school, that this was backing up traffic. And, you know, they, they want, I want to know if this was an issue, if a crossing guard will be put there. What else? Trying to think. I was told that Cafe A gets so overcrowded sometimes, that children are sometimes eating lunch standing up, and there are arguments over the tables. And that, you know, there's been a gap created by the lack of department coordinators, and what is being done to fill this gap. And I, and I just want to know if these concerns were brought to the administration's attention and what the response was.
Mrs. Aziz, are you part of the teachers' union?
No.
Are you, are you a employee of the district?
No, I'm not.
So what I would say is, any employee or a member of the union that is bringing information to you, they should seek their union representative in their buildings, and they should have a conversation with them as well as their building administration. We are not going to make comment on hearsay that you have regarding issues, that if a teacher actually had those concerns, they should, A, bring it to their union representative, or they should bring to the building administrator. Thank you for your comments.
Well, I think they came to me because they didn't feel like their concerns were addressed. So you're not making any comment about the veracity of these-
This report is so transparent.
The veracities of these concerns.
When they are brought to the district through the proper channels, they are addressed. If they were brought to their union representative or brought to the administration, I'm sure they are being properly addressed. Have they been brought to this board? I am not aware of those. So no, the board is not aware of that. But what I would say is, anybody that has any issue should go to their district administrator or their union representative. I don't know why they're coming to you. You are not connected to the district. You do not work for the district. You do not represent them in the union.
I am a parent, and so when I heard, you know, I heard one concern that children with extensive IEPs were not given proper supports in electives with over 30 kids. That became concerning to me as a parent, because I have a child that has special needs that could be in one of those electives. And I heard that some of those electives run in a different time with half the kids. So as a parent, I, I feel concerned about it. So I hope that this, this will be addressed through the union or through the administration, but as a parent, it's very concerning to me.
And as a parent, I would suggest that you contact your building administrator and bring up your concerns. Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public forum. The next item on our agenda is our closed session. And I will read our, back to the beginning.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education for the Township of Monroe hereby goes into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following topics: harassment, intimidation, and bullying, matters protected by attorney-client privilege, confidential personnel matter. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Motion.
Can I get a motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
No.
I would anticipate the closed session taking probably about an hour to an hour and a half. Okay, we're back in the public session. We've come out of a closed session, and we do have one item to vote on. Mrs. Chanley, Dr. Chanley, I'm sorry.
For attendant member vote under personnel, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel item S.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions?
No.
All right, can we have a roll call, please? Mr. Tavano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Baviano? Not here. Ms. Ratner? Here, Ms. Scott?
Yes.
And Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is a public forum for closed session items. Is there anybody wishing to address the board? All right, seeing none, we will close the public forum. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on November 15, 2023. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.